And if you can do a, um, roll call please.
Sure. Ms. Jordan Byron?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Here.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Mr. Shulman?
Here.
And Ms. Wells?
Here.
You have a quorum. And then Galen, if you just want to see Diana probably throughout the meeting.
Yes, I will be seated.
So Galen, the only thing is I'm going to recuse myself from the Shore and Country vote because I'm a member and a neighbor.
Okay. All right. Well, then we won't have a quorum for that unless somebody else comes. Ah, this has never happened before.
Hopefully Richard's able to join.
Yes, hopefully so. Okay, let's, we will proceed. The first matter is, uh, twenty twenty-five dash forty-five CAM, thirty-eight S D LLC, thirty-eight South Beach Drive. This is a coastal site, site plan review to raise an existing single-family residence to be FEMA flood compliant and construct minor additions. Uh, who is here representing the, uh, applicant?
I am Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of Planning and Zoning Commission. Good evening. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sandak and Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford, and I represent the applicant thirty-eight SPD LLC, along with the owners of thirty-eight SPD LLC Christine and Michael Angelakis, and Christine Angelakis, I believe, is present this evening. Um, I don't believe Mr. Angelakis is present. Also attending tonight are Oliver Cope and Olivia Ryan. They are the project architects. I believe there should be some Vincent Hines here from Redness and Mead Civil Engineers, and Caitlin Drury of Hollander Design is also present landscape architect. Uh, last but not least, Azure Slicer of Race Coastal Consulting is here in case you have any questions of her. Um, everyone is available for questions. It's a rather straightforward application before you, but just to go over it, coastal site plan application was filed on June third. That was within thirty days of the zoning board of appeals action, so it was timely filed. That action took place on May fifteenth. Neighbors were notified of the submission of the coastal site plan application on June tenth by certificate of mailing, and that certificate was delivered to staff. Uh, there were two nights of hearings before the zoning board of appeals, and I bring that to your attention because, as you know, under a coastal site plan application for a single-family dwelling, a public hearing is discretionary on your part. There were two robust nights of hearings, and I think that certainly gave the neighbors the opportunity to be heard, and they were. So the owner of the property is thirty-eight SPD LLC. Perhaps, um, Vince, if you could share the cyber, the survey of the site plan, that would be great. And while he is doing that, uh, South Beach Drive is bordered to the south by Long Island Sound to residentially develop properties to the north and south. Um, one on the other side of Golden Court, and South Beach Drive is its northern, um, uh, boundary. The property is zone CD one S. It used to be B residence. It is bisected by the coastal zone line, so the property is both VE fifteen and AE fifteen, and clearly it's within the boundary of coastal area management zone. The proposal before you is to keep the existing house, however, with renovations to be made to it. It trips the twenty-five percent, uh, market value of the structure. So we're obligated to raise the structure to meet or exceed both the FEMA requirement plus two feet. So the house is being elevated. There are some small additions, uh, proposed for the structure. Variances were granted by the zoning board of appeals with respect to front setback, setbacks with respect to the replacement garage, which actually, and that's on the far left side of the plan, that's actually going to be set back further than the existing garage, and some other minor, uh, variances that were necessary, but all necessary variances were granted in connection with elevating the house to meet or exceed the FEMA, uh, minimum flood elevation plus two feet. All work is landward of the coastal jurisdiction line. Uh, the house, since the portion of the house is in that, um, I take that back, all, all work is landward of the coastal jurisdiction line, and with the revision to your coastal setback line from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet, uh, there is no issue with, with respect to the location of the house or any, uh, proposed revisions. Um, there are no adverse impacts to coastal resources, namely Long Island Sound or adjoining properties anticipated. There has been a robust discussion, uh, with respect to this property and had, uh, input from neighbors. And applic- the application for coastal site plan also included, in addition to the survey, site plan, civil engineering drawings, a wave analysis, a, um, uh, stormwater drainage report, of course, the architectural plans by Oliver Cope Associates. So we believe that the site and the project meets all the requirements, city zoning regulations, the coastal area management regulations, and I believe that your staff has also issued a letter confirming that. Lastly, all requisite SEAC approvals have been secured, and that is fire, public works, South Newark Electric and Water, transportation, mobility and parking, and WPCA, and the harbor management commission last month, um, determined that the project was consistent with the harbor management plan. I'm happy to have any of the consultants on board walk you through either the site plan or the elevations, but everything is compliant. I know you have a long agenda, so unless you have specific questions, um, I think it might just be beneficial for us to move forward, and I hope that you don't believe it necessary to hold a public hearing on this coastal site plan.
Attorney Suchi, um, uh, I, I may have missed something, uh, but in reviewing, uh, the plans, um, one, one of the plans showed the adjoining property and, uh, what I assumed was a swimming pool between the two properties. I was just wondering why that was included.
Uh, initially, tho- those, the two properties were on one survey. They are separate and distinct properties owned by separate entities. You will actually see a coastal site plan application for the adjoining property where the cursor is now circling that has a pool, but the property that is before you in the subject of this application is only thirty-eight South Beach Drive, and the, the plan in front of you shows the dimensions and the, um, extent of that property. We had both of them on with the initial application to the zoning board of appeals to kind of get a sense of how these properties fit one to the other, but they're separate and distinct properties with separate and distinct requests and applications. You will see forty-six South Beach Drive either next month or at beginning of September.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On a note for the record that Commissioner Williams has joined us.
Thank you.
Attorney Suchi, yeah, oh, go ahead, Galen.
No, no, go right ahead. I'm sorry. Excuse me for interrupting.
Oh, sure. Um, Attorney Suchi, a question for you. Um, uh, in regards to the, the public comments and feedback that you had at the zoning board of appeals meetings, um, what, what kind of things were, were raised and how were they addressed in, in the plan that we see?
Sure. The majority of the, the comments were raised by individuals who did, who are not abutting property owners or directly across the street. Um, they were by individuals who lived closer to Row Eight and Avenue. We also received, uh, supportive letters and commentary from the adjoining property owners and those across the street. Um, those who were directly affected by this project did not share any, um, objections to it. Um, and it was, I think the, the question really from others related to elevating the structure and how elevating the structure eventually does impact streetscapes, but when you elevate a structure to meet minimum, a minimum flood plus the two feet, there is an impact, but, um, the adjoining property owners did not share any objections or voice any objection to this particular project when we went before the ZDA in May.
Appreciate that. Um, and as a separate question, and this is more focused on drainage, um, I noticed that stone reservoirs were being used, uh, throughout the site. Um, I'm curious if someone could speak to how that compares to using like the Coltech style, um, uh, catches. Uh, sorry, I'm lacking the terminology there, but I'm curious to hear the, the differences there because we, we more often see those, uh, versus the, the stone, uh, reservoirs here. So I'm curious to learn a little bit more about why there was a pit for this site.
Of course, Commissioner Bryce. At this point, uh, Vince Hines, if you could address that comment since you designed the plan, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, uh, Vince Hines, licensed engineer with Redness and Mead, having offices in Stamford and Wilton. Uh, our office provided the site engineering for the project. Uh, and in this case, just it's, you, you can cut, you can kind of see it on the, via the survey here that it's, it's a pretty tight site. It's just a hair over a quarter of an acre, uh, with about fifty-six hundred square feet of coverage under existing conditions. Uh, and that, that only increases by about eighty square feet with this, uh, proposal. So we, we were more focused on water quality over peak rates of attenuation because we're, we're only increasing incrementally. Um, with that said, the, the stone storage and, and where you get your water quality treatment from, even in, if, if you had a Coltech system, uh, is, that water quality is happening when, uh, benefit is happening when you filter through the stone below a Coltech system.
Okay.
So, so in this case, we're, the, where the volume, uh, is minimal, we're, we're only utilizing the stone a, as the means of providing that water quality. So you, so you have a series of either open deck joint, open jointed deck areas or, or like roof leaders that discharge right into the stone, let it filter through that stone and into the subgrade or in, in the heavier storm event, bubble, bubble on out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I have a question about the, um, retaining wall. There was a reference to a retaining wall. Can you show us where that is and why it's coming out?
I, Caitlin, or I, or I can speak to that, but I, I think the reference to a retaining wall that's being removed is primarily at the adjoining parcel line. And that's kind of in conjunction with the two neighboring plans, uh, coming together and, and there's, from a grading perspective, not a need for that wall under the proposed condition.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, uh, happy to elaborate, Caitlin Drury of Hollander Design, if there's any further questions on that.
Is it no longer needed because there is regrading between the two sites? Is, is that why it's no longer needed?
Um, well, Vince has the grading plan. You could pull that up as well, but, um, there's not grading more than a foot within the property line. We did.
Okay.
That's a minimum.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
It mainly has to do with conditions changing on the forty-six South Beach side of the property line.
I see.
So if, if anyone has any other questions, we're happy to answer them. Um, I don't know if it's necessary to walk through the architectures and no offense to Oliver and Olivia, but the dwelling is remaining general, almost exactly the same, just being elevated in place with some minor additions, as you can see, identified in that, um, beige color.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, let's, uh, is there? There are no questions, right? If anybody has any questions.
Only, oh, yeah. Uh, only question is if, uh, staff had any additional comments, uh, or wanted to review anything.
Um, there are, I have no additional comments. I had two small comments during my preliminary review, which the applicant had addressed, so I think, yeah, they sufficiently addressed both small staff comments, uh, believe that the proposal is consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act and that it won't, uh, there won't be any adverse impacts should this application be approved.
Is there a motion to approve?
This is Chapin. I'll, I'll pass out JJ, beat you to it, but I'll second JJ.
Okay, so JJ makes a motion and, uh, Chapin second. And here's a draft for a solution.
Did you post it already?
Can you see it on the screen, JJ?
I don't.
Yeah, it's right on the screen, JJ.
No, I didn't. I think I just have too many screens up. Hold on. You see, I can see it right away. Okay, thanks.
They are the pretty standard conditions for, um, waterfront, uh, raising properties on the waterfront with FEMA approvals, planting plans and such.
Hmm.
Does anybody have any comments on the, uh, resolution?
I have a comment, uh, not directly on the resolution. Uh, uh, I guess it's a, a question for Brian. Um, I mean, this see, all seems quite, quite, uh, straight, straightforward and a fairly easy vote. Uh, but if we felt, uh, that a public hearing, um, was, uh, desirable in this case, and I, I for one don't, um, at what point, Brian, uh, do we, do we bring that up?
Good question. Um, you know, if, if generally we base our decision on whether a public hearing should be held based on kind of the size of the project and scope. Um, so if a project were to come in that's fairly significant, we would bring that to you as a preliminary review and recommend that you hold a public hearing on it. Um, so this might be a little bit late in the game if, should we, you know, make that decision. Um, but generally, we're kind of using judgment calls to decide on when an application is significant enough to rise to the level of a public hearing and getting that onto an agenda quickly for you so that you can let the applicant know and that you guys have time to review.
Thank you.
Sure.
Brian, did we have a, um, public hearing for the Harbor Review House that was raised, um, very recently?
No, generally for the single-family homes, we don't, we don't.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Are we ready for a vote? Amelia, can you, uh, do a roll call vote?
Gladly. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Rowena?
Just having arrived, I'll abstain.
Commissioner Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryce?
Yes.
Commissioner Lankowski?
Yes.
And Commissioner Shulman?
Yes.
I believe that's everyone.
Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next, uh, matter. This is uh, twenty twenty-five dash fifty SPR Craig Highland and Nancy Zindel. Three fifteen Row Eight and Avenue. Uh, it's a site plan review application for the construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit. Who is here for the, uh, applicant?
I am again, Chair, Madam Chairman.
Ah. Please proceed.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a long night for Liz.
Yeah, and for you, unfortunately. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time. Liz Suchi with, a partner with Carmody Torrent Sandak and Hennessy. I represent the owners of the property. Uh, excuse me, Craig Highland and Nancy Zindel. The property is three fifteen Row Eight and Avenue, District six, block twenty-seven, lot five. Uh, just a little bit of background, an application for site plan review for an accessory dwelling unit was filed on June twenty-fourth. Neighbors within a hundred feet of the property were notified of the submission by certificate of mailing on July first, and the certificate was returned to staff. And then, um, that should be part of the permanent file. Property is bounded to the east by Row Eight and Avenue, to the west by Chasmer Pond, and then to the south by the Metro North tracks and to the north by a residentially developed property. Um, maybe, let's see, Nick Seda, if you could possibly screen share the survey and other site plan. So present tonight are Nick Seda, who's the project architect, Wayne DiVangelo, who's the project civil engineer, and Mr. Highland is present as well. The property is zone CD one M. It's approximately just shy of an acre in size, and it is improved currently with a single-family residence. If, if you don't know where the property is, you're traveling north on Row Eight and Avenue, and you go underneath the Row Eight and, uh, the railroad overpass, this property is directly on the left, just as you come out from underneath the overpass. In green, you'll see that's the existing residence. Um, and the proposed accessory dwelling unit is on this, this bottom of the parcel. You'll see another square. If you could circle that, um, where it is, that's the existing residence in green. There's the accessory dwelling unit. Uh, accessory dwelling units require a site plan review. This is a, of course, a detached accessory dwelling unit, but it meets all the requirements of not only the CD one M zone, but also the accessory dwelling unit standards in that it meets all the setbacks. It's no more than seven hundred square feet in size. It has two independent parking spaces, and it is no larger and no taller than what an accessory dwelling unit can be in this zone. Um, it complies, as I said, with all the requirements, the zoning, the zoning regulations. Stormwater runoff has been evaluated by Mr. DiVangelo. There, but he and Mr. Seda are both here. If you'd like to see the plans, if you'd like them to go through the plan, the plan's more specifically with you. But, um, it's a rather straightforward ADU application. All of these sign-offs, I believe, have been received. If not, uh, we have responded to any outstanding questions. I think staff has issued a report, perhaps. Uh, but we have also not received any comments, negative comments from neighbors. I have not received any, and I do believe that there is at least one, if not two, letters of support in the file, one from the neighbor directly to the north, and then one from a neighbor across the street to the east on Row Eight and Avenue. If you'd like Mr. DiVangelo to walk you through the drainage, drainage plan, we'd be happy to do so, and if you'd like Mr. Seda to walk you through the architectural plans, we'd be happy to do that as well. So whatever your preference is.
Does anybody have any questions or want to see the, uh, drainage in architectural? View?
I have a question unrelated to drainage or architectural, um, a- as it relates to the site plan that's up here. I see the proposed gravel driveway, um, goes into the other site. Um, is a easement or something needed to, uh, to make that driveway possible?
Uh, we certainly could, we certainly could implement an easement, but my client also owns that property as well. It kind of wraps around the back. But if that's something that you'd like us to do, to be clear, moving forward, we can certainly create an easement, have an easement mapping, record that on land records.
Okay. Um, Brian, oh, go ahead, Galen.
Is it all one parcel that your client owns, or is it?
They are two separate parcels, two independent, separate parcels.
So if it goes over the other independent separate parcel, if that's ever going to be sold, you'd need to have an easement.
Correct, correct. And you can make that a condition of approval if you'd like, and we would do it in the, in the future anyway, should we ever decide to sell the property, but you're absolutely right. In order for that to cross and to be clear moving forward, um, an easement should be created and recorded.
Okay. Uh, I'm not sure if others have strong opinions on that one or the other. Brian, do you have a?
Uh, I think for belts and suspenders, it's worth including. Again, I think like Liz said, they'll, they'll do it on their own anyway, should they ever sell the property, but, um, yeah, I, I think it's worth including.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I, a very quick comment. Obviously, uh, we, as a commission, we've have, uh, shown uh, that we are generally very friendly toward the, uh, development of, uh, of these, uh, ADUs. Um, and, uh, I see absolutely no reason personally, uh, why I can't vote for this. Um, and I can also understand why they might want it as far away from, uh, the residences, uh, possible for everybody's privacy. Um, but they seem to have made an effort to get as close to the railroad as possible.
I think part of the issue there, there is some, some grading challenges as you move to the rear of the property, plus the property line in the back. And it, it just becomes, um, logistically and from a construction perspective, it's, it's, this is probably the best place to put it close to the road. The, there's one driveway access. There's limited disturbance between the roadway and, and getting around the back of the dwelling rather than having to create an, another awkward, um, access route.
Right, and, and, and frankly, when I went to visit this location, there was a lot that I couldn't see. Uh, because, be, be, because of the way, uh, uh, in which the land behaves.
Exactly.
It's going to be north of the railroad?
Yes, it is. The railroad tracks are directly adjacent where the cursor is. Um, where you see the graphic scale, you'll, you'll see Connecticut, Connecticut, State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, Metro North. It's right there.
Okay.
Right next door.
I see.
Uh, I would, um, move, uh, that we, uh, approve this project.
I will second that motion. This is Chapin.
Okay, good. Uh, Brian, is there a resolution?
Yep.
It's got to be a little bit bigger.
So that, obviously, the highlighted language is the, the new language to reflect that driveway easement.
Right.
Thank you.
Catch Chapin.
While I know that the applicant, applicant can't speak now, uh, I would love to hear their feedback sometime on the overall process for bringing forth, uh, such an ADU and, uh, any thoughts, feedback and suggestion that they have, I guess, should be directed towards staff, but, uh, I'd be interested to, to hear, so.
Yeah, it might be a cool idea for us to reach out to a lot of the folks who've applied or detached and get their feedback and kind of compile that and give that back to you guys as a little bit of a report or something.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
True.
Should have thought of that two minutes ago, but.
Does, does anybody have any suggestions for changes to the resolution? Okay, Brian, I think we're ready then to do a, uh, a roll call vote.
Sure. Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
That is approved.
Well, again, everyone, thank you for your time tonight, and we'll see you in a little bit.
Thank you. The next matter is twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one. SPR slash CAM Spinnaker Acquisitions LLC, one oh eight Water Street. Uh, it is a coastal site, site plan review application for the construction of a four-point-five-story mixed-use development. This is our preliminary review. Uh, is, is attorney Blank here?
Uh, yes, Ms. Wells. Hi, nice to see you. Uh, yeah, so at Adam Blank of WOFC Rosen, uh, Julie Ludwig from my office is also, uh, on for Spinnaker, the, uh, applicant or the contract purchaser for one oh eight, uh, Water Street. I can share. Here we go. All right, so, um, so this is a joint venture at Spinnaker and the Gersten family, uh, on the project. Uh, the property is, uh, two-point-seven-two acres in the SD, uh, marine commercial zone, looking to, uh, construct this mixed-use development, uh, which would consist of boat slips, a boardwalk, office space, personal service establishments, which is, uh, uh, almost retail, but not exactly the same under your definitions, uh, down at street level, uh, apartments, a restaurant and a water-dependent, uh, use in addition to those, uh, boat slips. Um, the site uh, is going to be right here at the end of Hanford and Water Street. This is the site, Sono Seafood or Sono Seaport, however you refer to it, is right, right located here. Obviously, Washington Street, uh, uh, down here. Um, the, um, I'll give you an aerial. This is a, a current condition of the site right now. Um, I think this was taken within the last, uh, month or so. Uh, so the existing site has, uh, no public access to the waterfront, um, in the redevelopment. Uh, uh, we are proposing quite a bit of public, uh, access, um, to that waterfront. Um, we'll have, uh, essentially, uh, a landscaped park and boardwalk, uh, along the harbor, along with those, uh, boat slips. Um, and we, we really do hope that this kind of, uh, uh, design, uh, and layout will sort of serve as a catalyst both for continued, uh, public walkway, um, along, uh, the harbor there on Water Street for connectivity and greater access to the waterfront for Norwalks residents, as well as, as a potential blueprint for, um, for, for creating a sort of a park-like setting, but also, um, a reuse of, uh, underutilized, uh, parcels, uh, uh, along Water Street. Um, again, this is right now, the site, uh, as you saw, is, uh, no public use at all. Um, and the, by making it this, this sort of park-like setting, there's no cost to the city on that. Um, and, and we are estimating with the one percent development fee that you guys, uh, impose now on, on all developments, the transfer taxes, permitting fees. We were talking about, uh, uh, over a million dollars, probably a one-point-two-five million, uh, in fees, uh, upfront on the project. And then once, once it gets going five or six years out, we're estimating around five hundred thousand a year in, uh, property tax revenue. So I'm going to give you a, a few more minutes of an overview, uh, and then, um, Vince Hines, uh, who you've, uh, uh, know and love from Redness and Mead, project engineer, he'll, he'll talk, uh, briefly, uh, and then, uh, you'll hear a little bit about the, um, architecture from Sealan, uh, Pather from, uh, Beinfield, uh, Architecture. Um, those are the only folks that are going to give you any kind of formal presentation tonight. Uh, I do think we have Brian Dempsey, the traffic engineer, on with us. the traffic engineer, on with us if there's questions for him, and Matt Edwardson and and Henry Conroy from Spinnaker are also available to answer questions that you may have. So back to the project, and I'll stop sharing for a minute. I'll pull it back up.
Adam, before you go any further, if if you don't mind, I have a question for Brian. I I know that this is a site plan review. And it's it looks like it could be a very exciting project. But it's also a project of some size. And I'm wondering if there, if we could hold, if it's allowed for us to hold a public hearing on this rather than just going through the site plan review process.
Yeah, so you, again, for coastal site plan reviews, public hearings are discretionary, so it's at the commission's discretion to hold the hearing. Based on the size of this project, we would expect you to hold the hearing. So we kind of had given Adam a heads up, like we're expecting the commission to to go with that. And so that was kind of our expectation. So after Adam's presentation, we'll have you guys take a vote on seeing if you'd like to hold the hearing.
Okay. And Adam, if I may, I I know you've worked with the Beinfield Group for for some time. Great loss to the city. The the passing of Bruce.
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, so you, right, you can decide if you want to have a public hearing, and and we were expecting that whether you did or you didn't, probably in the beginning of September, we would be back in front of you. This does need to go to the Harbor Commission. And it is outside of the redevelopment area, so there's no design review on the project. The so again, it is coastal site plan. The uses are, it is a site plan, so the uses are all as a right. There's no special permit. We're not asking for anything that's not allowed as a right under the site plan regulations. I'm not going to go through the layout of the buildings. We'll let Sealan deal with that. I'll tell you briefly. We've got two hundred and forty nine parking spaces, which meets your minimum parking requirements. Just about every one of them is garage spaces. We we also did what you don't always see or don't typically see. The traffic engineer did a an ITE shared parking analysis where he looked at not what your zoning regulations require, because we meet those parking requirements, but what the ITE says you'll actually need for these these mix of uses at the highest peak hours of the day to see if the parking that we provide will house the number of vehicles that the ITE says will be generated by those uses. And that analysis came back showing that as a practical matter, that we'll have more parking than than is will be needed at any peak period. Additionally, to just let you know on the project, it's, I mean, it's it's a substantial project and and it's, I guess, it's a lot of units of housing, but it's actually only fifty nine units on on almost three acres. What you'll see with this project is that the units are significantly larger than what you would typically see. Of those fifty nine units, twenty five are one bedroom, seventeen are two bedroom, thirteen are three bedroom and four are four bedroom. And that sort of fills a gap in the apartment market for those larger family sized units. And and of course, we are providing affordable units. And we're we're actually proposing two three bedroom units as part of the affordable unit package, which again, you don't typically get such large affordable units. The property, let me go back to my share. All right. So the property, the property, right, so the property historically, way back, it was a material storage yard. More recently, it's been winter boat storage. It's been the predominant use, and that that accounts for roughly eighty eight percent of the site. The rest of the site has been used by a dock building business. And so the the boat storage, you know, I think it's classified as a water dependent use, but in reality, at this site, it's not really a water dependent use. The boats are not pulled out of the water right here at the site. They're trailered in from outside South Norwalk. They could be trailered to any inland location. They could be across the street. They could kind of be anywhere. It just happens that they're they're trailered to this site. There's currently no boat slips at the site. And we are looking for for fourteen slips from the state. We need to get permitted from deep for those boat slips. We're asking for the most that the state will allow, which we we hope and expect will be approximately fourteen boat slips. The I think that, again, in your P O C D and in the Norwalk's affordability plan, there's there's a fair amount of talking about reworking and reutilizing underutilized lots, and this really isn't underutilized lots. Lot. In fact, this this lot has no groundwater infiltration or treatment. There's no green area. There's no formal drainage system. Runoffs either discharges just straight from the site into the harbor, or it goes from the site out to the to the street to the city stormwater system and discharges just just down the road at one thirty Water Street into the harbor. With our development, we're actually going to decrease coverage by twelve thousand square feet. Water quality will be improved by by placing most of the parking within a covered garage by installing infiltration systems to collect about seventy percent of the disturbed impervious coverage. We'll be using green roof trays, permeable walkways with crushed stone reservoirs below. About seventy nine percent of the site area runoff will be treated compared to zero that's currently treated. The we also are, you know, it's our sort of hope and that a number of the employees will either live within the development and and we're proposing quite a bit of office. So we're hoping that not just retail employees, but office employees will either live in the development or in the neighborhood and help create a more walkable environment. The also the, really, the the whole intent of the project is to create this sort of community of complementary uses in a park-like setting where residents can live, eat, work, remain connected to the harbor, a play right in the heart of downtown Sono. There's quite a bit of open air walkways, patios, green spaces. And that's like the overarching goal of the project. At the waterfront, we're proposing to restore bulkhead that's in in great need of restoration, in addition to adding a grand staircase down directly to the water, so the public literally has access to the water. And that's all in addition to an expansive boardwalk, which I think in Sealan's slides, you'll be able to see a little bit more clearly than from this angle. We expect a hub of activity with the rest with the restaurant use that's right here facing the the waterfront as well as the office residential waterfront uses and the boat slips. And just to sort of reiterate for you, so in the in the Marine Commercial Zone, the zone where we're in, public realm is not required. There's no public realm that's required in this zone, nor has any historically been provided at the property. We're proposing about thirty seven percent of the site to be of the land area to be public realm. That equates to over an acre of property that will effectively be public park area, public realm area. And this hatched areas demonstrate what we've listed as the public realm area, and you could probably quarrel with whether it should be a little more or a little less, but it gives you a pretty good sense that we're not talking about a small portion of the site. It's a pretty significant portion of the site. And and we had quite a number of versions of these plans. And and each time it got refined, the the public realm was increased and increased to to really create connectivity between Water Street and the harbor. It is in a flood zone. We're in the AE and the VE zones. It's split. But the project has been designed so that the the structures are all in the AE zone. Of course, the living areas will be then at at above, all above that base flood elevation, making it unlikely for there to be flooding within the the living areas. We have a flood preparedness plan that's been submitted for procedures for people to follow to ensure that they can safely relocate their vehicles. Because that's the real risk is is that vehicles in the parking areas might be subject to flooding. We I I mentioned earlier that there's a significant amount of office space as part of the project. The office space, this chunk of building and this chunk of building is about a hundred and ten thousand square feet. That's gross. That is is a fair amount smaller, but a hundred and ten thousand square feet of gross office space, which is a very sizable amount of new office space to come on the market. The client has begun marketing that space already. It is a tough environment for for office spaces. We're all well aware. But we believe the property is is quite unique. It's waterfront, high-end spaced, highly amenitized. And we think there is a demand in the market for that type of a product as evidenced by the the Corbin District, which you may know in in Darien that's under construction now and has a fair amount of office space that similarly amenitized, high-end and and has not had issues leasing up. So we're hoping that we're going to follow their footsteps and and have no issues leasing up. I will say, we we recognize a hundred and ten thousand feet of office is is aggressive. And if if we have issues leasing, then we may come back to you with with some other option for some portion of the space, but that's not our our hope. Our hope is we we lease out the the space fully. Another positive about that project is, you know, Washington Street is always sort of teetered on the brink with a high turnover of the restaurant and retail spaces there. And any of you that try to go to lunch on a weekday on Washington Street, most of those places aren't even open on weekdays. There's just not much foot traffic on the weekdays on Washington Street. And we do think that by by adding this office space on these residential units, and it's really the office space, but that that's going to drive weekday afternoon visitors to Washington Street to try to help keep that vitalized. We're not, this project doesn't displace a single resident, you know, in South Norwalk. There's no housing on the site currently. And we think this combination of uses complements each other is great for South Norwalk and really perfect for this site. So with that sort of brief overview, I you don't have questions, I'll I'll turn it over to Vince and then to Sealan.
All right, questions?
Here, here, no, no, I'll I'll take the lead. Vince Hines again with Redness and Mead. We provided the engineering and surveying services for the development project here. So feel free, if you have any site plan specific comments, I'm happy to respond. Adam stole a lot of my thunder and stuff that I would typically talk about. You know, it's a two point seven acre site with primarily hardscaped surfaces. There's no notable green area on the existing site with and no formal drainage systems in place. Stormwater. She either she flows into Water Street where it's collected by the city drainage infrastructure and eventually piped to the harbor via easement at one thirty Water Street. Or she flows directly to the harbor where there's very deteriorated in a bulkhead at at the property edge. Share my screen now here. So again, this is the kind of top down view of the site. City standard streetscape elements at the frontage of Water Street with in the form of street trees, street lighting and sidewalks. And then as as Adam indicated, we have drainage improvements on site meeting the requirements of both the zoning regs and the city drainage manual. So this proposal actually includes a decrease to impervious coverage. Like I said, the existing site is primarily hardscaped. The reduction is about twelve thousand square feet. And that includes improvements to creating those landscaped elements on the water tree, on the water side, harbor side, as well as introducing permeable surface walkways that connect the Water Street frontage to the water, both along the south property line and the northern property line. What that doesn't account for is the fact that we're introducing about eleven thousand six hundred square feet of green roof area on on the roof of the building. I say that's not accounted for in the decrease only because the that green roof is still technically impervious by zoning's definition, but it does provide a a green element for both stormwater management and sustainability. In in addition to the permeable surfaces and the green roof elements, we do have two underground infiltration systems. You know, one is underneath the lower level of the garage. And that collects a portion of the street facing roof area as well as the corresponding driveways at the north and south property lines. And and that is then piped to the city infrastructure. The the pipe being set such that the water quality volume is met for the tributary area. Similarly, the underground infiltration system here on the east side of the site is sized for the tributary area by the water quality volume. And that's kind of the remainder of the roof area is tributary to that system. And then we've created a piped condition through the reworked bulkhead. As Adam indicated, seventy percent of the disturbed impervious coverage is treated via these two systems, while seventy nine percent of the total site area is treated via the underground infiltration, permeable surfaces and and green roof area. The site plan also includes a series of sediment and erosion controls that will provide guidance and for erosion and dust control in order to minimize any potential impact that construction activities may have on the neighborhood. With respect to the flood zone, the building itself is proposed and and all structural elements are proposed in the AE zone. So it's designed to meet the AE zone criteria of the city flood zone standards with the finished floor elevation of the first floor commercial space at at the lower end, set two feet above the base flood. I I won't go into full detail on the site engineering report, but we do offer discussion of the drainage within Water Street as it relates to some low points and ponding water as referenced also in the resilient South Norwalk report that AE COM had prepared for for the city. One specific element that I wanted to touch on is that the report recommends elevating sections of Water Street to reduce the frequency and depths of potential flooding that occurs from your spring and king tides and and your coastal surge events. I will say, while no one owner can achieve that that broader result, the design of the building has taken that into consideration. So the lower garage is set to elevation nine, which is the recommended roadway elevation in the AA COM report. And the lobbies along the Water Street side of the project are designed such that they could be elevated in the future, should the city move forward with any type of road work to raise that elevation. So those, just roughly, those those doorways are approximately elevation six and a half as proposed, but they're in double height ceiling spaces, which would enable them to be raised to that elevation nine as I referenced. I think with that said, if anybody has any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, I'll pass it to Sealan.
Mr. Hines, why not simply design and build to that nine foot height?
The, yeah, so to to create the lobby space at elevation nine, we would we would have to ramp and or stair provide stairs to access those spaces because the road along this frontage of Water Street is actually ranging from elevation four point eight to five point eight. So just add six inches for a curb and and a two percent standard cross pitch on your sidewalk. That's how we came up with the the current elevation of six and a half, plus or minus.
And what would be the impact of of bringing it up the those additional three feet? Should it um, should the 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 city take action on raising the street?
There would be an internal, you know, cost to the owner at that point to just some minor structural elements that need to be considered. But in general, it's an easy enough task to raise that three feet because of the double height spaces.
Well, then back to my original question, why not simply design uh right now so that uh
Lou, if I can, Commissioner Shulman, if I can just jump in. You, if you imagine right now, if you looked at like Sono Harbor side, basically across the street. You know, the 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 entrance to the sort of front doors is kind of high from the street. So the question is, is would you really want to have four foot taller of a wall between the street and the entrance to your front? You you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to see in it all from the street, you'd have a pretty tall wall. So the idea is to design it in a way that it works appropriately now, but can be converted if Water Street's ever ever elevated so that it it works then too. You'd have a huge ramp now to get up four feet higher for ADA access, you'd have massive stairs, it would be pretty walled off from the rest of Water Street.
My only concern here is is the ease with which Water Street now floods. And wi- without significant action on everybody's part, that's going to continue to happen.
Attorney, like you're muted. Oh, sorry, but the the flooding, if we raise the building, it won't impact flooding on Water Street.
I know, I understand.
So I think I could, uh, Mr. Shulman, I could go through that when I show you my plans. To have diagrams. Thanks Vince.
Sorry, while we're on drainage. Mr. Hines, real quick, sorry. Yeah, so what, speaking of of Water Street, um, and and thank you for in the report, like taking time to discuss the the flooding that's in Water Street, as I imagine that's going to be a significant concern for residents. One of the things I I appreciate is excuse me, um, how you guys highlighted the backflow preventer um at one thirty Water Street being a a good solution and really helping the title impacts on on that flooding. One thing I want to ask is for um you guys as a team and as an applicant to see what's possible for uh you all to help with implementing something like that. I think it would go a long way, not not only showing that you care about having good access on Water Street, but also ease a lot of neighbor concerns. And set a really good tone for uh coming in with this project. So I just wanted to request that you guys take a look at that between now and our September-ish meeting, when hopefully we will see you again. Uh, but thank you for putting that in there, because I imagine that's going to be something that residents have a lot of concern about, is the flooding on Water Street, so wherever we can address that would really help.
Yeah, absolutely, and I and I think Henry, who's on, uh, if you have a direct question on it. Between him and myself via the report, we have reached out to DPW on that front.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I imagine that would involve uh coordination with DPW and the property owner of that site as well to to figure out what what makes sense there.
Yeah, and de- depending on the final design of that backflow preventer, it might might include deep as well.
Sure, okay. Yeah, I I imagine it's a a sizable task, but would be I'm I'm sure quite welcome by the community for you guys to help out with that. That was it, uh, thank you.
Fisher Architectural, so good evening, my name is Ceeilin Papa, I'm the principal. At Bainfield Architecture, Mr. Shulman, from all of us at Bainfield, thank you for your kind words. I will quickly today with just the highlights, uh, but please stop me if you want me to dig deep into anything. Do you see my screen?
No, not yet.
Do you see my screen? About now.
Yep, just, it's just, there you go, yeah.
Alright, great. Just, I know you've seen this image, Adam just showed it, but I just want to start with this because it it demonstrates that at the moment, there's no connection from Water Street to the water across the site now. Probably probably can't walk across. And that just highlights one of the central concepts of the way we laid out this development. Is that we wanted it to be permeable. So this plan demonstrates that permeability. There are three ways and and on this private to get to the water, one is across the edge of this north part of the side, you see a walkway all the way down and across, and I'll show you that in the renderings. There's another way on the south, again, you just be walking on the sidewalk and turn right at grade without changing elevation. Walk all along this edge of the site and get to the boardwalk. And then there's another curated way uh to the center of the site, it's a little more dramatic, we wanted to engage all parts of the building a- as you went through it, so you would come off the sidewalk, you'd go up as a grand stair. Again, I'll get into more detail, it's it's a thoughtful approach in that the grand stair gives you access to various levels, Mr. Shulman, I'll take you through that. Describe the various levels in which you enter the building. But it stops the various levels you need to on your way up, the parking, the retail level above flood. And then you get to an elevation that's about thirteen foot above um the waterline. Over touching for about the waterline, it's actually touching for about the boardwalk here, so you're high now. You're high between the buildings, but an open, open publicly accessible walkway. Through the, through the development, so it doesn't feel enclosed and private, and that delivers you to um a deck, again, thirteen foot of above um this portion of the site and above the water, and you're looking over and down. This is the central court, it's meant to be a space that's shared by pedestrians and cars. If you were in a car, you'd loop around like this. You'd drop off and go to the offices on either side. Or if you're a future resident, you could park at one of these spaces and go to the leasing office right here, but the central space that you have three entrances to the buildings. I'll show you clearly in the renderings, but a but an important focal point, the heart of our development, then looking over the water. And then continuing on the curated permeable wood to the sides, you you would loop down this this garden-like path to the water and arrive at one of the few places in Norwalk. Well, in South Norwalk, uh, public spaces anyway, that you can actually touch the water. The touch in the water part, we're still working out with deep, hopefully we can get it, get to that, but the idea is to have a termin- terminally part of the development, we have steps to the water, she's actually sitting on the steps and and literally touch the water. The the plans are uh are significantly, there's significant changes in grade and and I don't want to use the word complex because we understand it, but you know, you might have to look at it a few times before you cross the different levels. But this is, uh, I think what we were speaking about, this elevation of this road is uh between five and six. Yeah, the simple answer to the question, Mr. Shulman, is that you have to keep at least one door or a few doors to offer accessible access between the sidewalk and the and the building, and that's why you have a couple of low doors. Literally just here, and we actually call it ADA lobby. And here. What that offers, what these two small lobbies at at that elevation, at that low elevation offer is ADA access from the residential and ADA access for the public to get up into the spaces. Now, if we raise the street to nine, the cost that Vince was alluding to was we just, we just have to figure out these two lobbies, we just raise these two lobbies here, change the elevator pit, and then we're good to go. Everything else is above flood. So it's just these two. You drive up these driveways and you get into a park, the first parking level, there's two of them. First parking level is at elevation nine, so that is in the flood. But raised off the street to what we think is an acceptable level for cars being in that flood. And then sorry, again, just stop me at any time, right, so here you see the walkways going around, so if you're walking down the street, you would not need to, it's a nice walk we think through the building, but you would not need to walk through the building, you can literally just turn down on grade, barely flat, and get to the boardwalk on either side. So get to the next level. Now we're at elevation, this is at elevation fourteen, and this is the upper deck at elevation nineteen, I think it is. This, the the way to think about these two, just for the, you know, you you guys know Water Street, is to think about Sona Harbor side, this, it's going to look the same. It's going to have a elevated walkway off Water Street and what we're calling this personal service establishment, this is zoning, but retail-type establishments up at fourteen, very similar to the way the Sona Harbor side uh works today with steps coming up here. So if you're walking down, you want to go to this establishment, you walk up the steps, or you walk up the grand steps and get to mid-landing and you go through. But if you're in a wheelchair, you go into that door at the bottom, into this elevator delivers you out into this area to that, to get the retail as well. Or you can go up one, this is a fourteen, this is a nineteen, you go up one more level on this, on this elevator, and you get to this this coral and you come down this boardwalk, so you always have an accessible entrance to development and through as a member of the public, not not just a a resident. And and once you get to this point up here, again, we hope building is set up to be dramatic and take advantage of the dramatic views of the river and its location on the river. So we have here is three entrances. Leasing lobby and the office and the office on either side. And then you walk down the path, we take some steps down here and here to elevation fourteen again, now you're going back down and you have water-related use, and we're thinking like maybe if we can get a boat club out there, um, a rowing club maybe, or canoe rental, but of water-related use with a deck out here, and then a restaurant with a deck out here, both at fourteen, closer to the water. Uh, we've designed it with no guardrails, it feels, it feels like, again, permeable to the water in both these spaces. But all publicly accessible, all of this. We'll go through, we'll discuss this in detail, uh, how the building actually functions in terms of trash and so on, and 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 how we've catered to fire trucks and invested all of that. How this, there's a loop road essentially around that, around this development that serves that. Go to the next level. And now you're, now you're up one level from that lower deck. You're in the two office spaces. But you're also now at a residential amenity deck. So this pool area that we shed by uh people who live in the building sits w- one level above all of this and looks over it into the water. Again, hopefully, a curated view. I'm going to stop saying generic. And then the building just rises up. You see that, I think what what's worth seeing here is that we, as we get into the roof line of the building towards controlled amassing and for architectural uh treatments, we've built lofts and the offices into the roof line of the building on these two buildings, that's why you see all these notches, you'll see it better in the renderings, but there are lofts on the residential. And then it's office space built into the roof because we wanted to have a certain uh scale on that, this this office building. And then this office building will have a really great amenity and office space at the upper upper level, there's a green roof above it and a fantastic roof deck, and that's why that's why we're saying that potentially we're going to get some of the high-end offices users because there's nothing like it, right? If you're in a loft or deck or looking to water, it's nothing like anymore. And there's a solar array that we're sharing up here, again, part of our sustainability package, and a green roof, and you'll see that there in the ring. This is just showing the uses. Might take you a while to click into this over a couple meetings, but this is the, this is an office building here. Here's an office and amenity space up here. In purple back there, that's the residential, here's that residential deck, one level higher than the courtyard in front of it. And this office building spans spans this edge here, the residential ducks behind it. Here's your water-related use here at fourteen, here's your restaurant at fourteen, that deck's at nineteen, that's a residential's twenty-nine. And here's that walkway coming straight through that I was saying that you walk through from those stairs, this grand stairs, and it delivers you to this space here. Which is the heart of the project. In terms of the architecture.
Dylan, real quick. For that, the water-related use, is that, I mean, this might be semantics. In the, in the zoning regs, I think we have a category of uses that's marine and vessel uses. I- is that sort of like interchangeable with that term, so that when the commission's looking at this, that they kind of have an idea of a, like a category of uses that we have codified that will eventually occupy that portion of the building, should it get approved?
Adam, you say, you have a better answer, and I'm going to give them this before I answer.
Yeah, we, uh, I think we, I think for for purposes of the zoning, we could, we could, look at it's obvious, we we don't have a tenant lined up for that space yet. We, because you have a handful of different marine uses in the code, we have to put one down. I think it's under marine supply is the formal submission code. And and when we get an end user, we may have to to tweak that, but
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you need, I don't think you need to answer this tonight, is like, I don't think you need to pin down what that actual specific use will be, but if it's in that category, I think then then we have the commission has some sort of idea that it's going to be a water-dependent use, which is big component of the CAM application component.
Got it, thanks. Thanks, Brian. So, like I was saying, uh, our office has taken this approach in a few projects in that we wanted this to look like the this this development potentially incrementally came together over time. And um, we have two, two buildings up front lying in the street, and these are brick buildings. Or brick-clad buildings. And if you, if you know, in our work, we try to evoke uh the the architecture that existed in historic South Norwalk, and whether that be the brick buildings on Washington Street or the lock building and the manufacturing buildings. We try and draw inspiration from it, and that's what these two buildings are meant to do. We treat them slightly differently, but we'll cut them, cut them bolt and brick because we wanted some variation, but for lack of a better description, I would describe this as our factory-facing street, street buildings. This, this architecture here, the sawtooth is a direct reference to factory-sorted roofs. Um, and then we, in somewhat slightly whimsical play, we turned it around and cladded onto this, this brick box here, but to add some architectural interest, we think it's dynamic. But what it also does, because it's cantilevered, is it frees up this communication between the water and Water Street here, it doesn't land, so it feels more open. These are the storefronts, here's the race storefront with the with the race walkway in front of it here, here's your ADA entrance, again, if this gets up to nine foot, foot, all that would happen is that that would be cut off. And the grid will be raised around it there. I'll get more into materials and so on the next time we meet. Now we're looking at the water, but we're still looking at the south side. Here's the walkway, the platform that I keep talking about, coming all the way down towards the water and turning into the turning onto the boardwalk. Uh, and that boardwalk goes down and potentially, we're trying to figure out if we can get it, get it to extend past the restaurant that's here and and continue it as far as we can, that's the goal, and hopefully with the help of all the property owners and so on, we can eventually get a boardwalk that actually goes all the way down to the bridge. This building, this office building here, is meant to evoke sort of maritime architecture with weathered wood plating, um, and then you see in the embellishments. We're, we're starting layering it with detail, and that detail is in influenced by sort of maritime architecture with the brackets at the at these projecting balconies, um, and then these uh sail-type shade structures out front. There's use of stone bases, again, these are all maritime references, uh, and they're also references that you find in Norwalk and This is one of my favorite images because it 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 shows it it shows that idea of this being a maritime-type building and this this building here being provocative of what we see in in South Norwalk today. And one of our projects even up at the, at the maritime parking garage. An important takeaway from this image is that, this is again, is This is again, is all public space. That's your arrival point. Uh, anyone can come in and up through here and enjoy the space. And then we try to, to make it as engaging as possible. So that here's your maritime related use. Here's your restaurant. We potentially grade it up to it so there's no, uh, no need for, for guardrails in the edges. It feels that you can. You're just over the water and then you walk across, you can go straight across this space, cross that space into that space. So all that space is now publicly, publicly accessible where it wasn't before. And this is an area that maybe if deep allows us that you can slip any steps and actually touch the water. Um, the only place I can dig up, so when I walk around is always Shell Park, that's a place you can actually walk down to the edge and get to the water. That's what I think about when I think about that experience. It's nice. Um. And then this is that, this is the, uh, i- if, if this was an incremental growth, this would be the building that would say came last and was the most modern. And, um, Spudico wanted to create a really good office space here. So they get, they challenged us to, to do a wood frame. Uh, a heavy timber frame building. And I just wanna show you this really quickly because it's, it's a cool concept and it's not a cheap one. But they wanna try it and it's a small version we did in Darien. Um, the idea is that it's, it's a more responsible way to build. Um, the heavy timber and the carbon, uh, carbon capture and so on. But it's also beautiful and it's been successful in, in Darien. And that's what they wanna do here. And that's what we're looking at. It's a fairly, uh, largely glazed building. Still has a industrial feel to it with the skeleton on the outside, but on the inside it's heavy timber. So we could execute that. That'd be great.
Great, thanks, Dylan.
Sorry, wrap up to someone say.
Oh, no, I thought you were done. But you got a little more?
Oh, last one. Sorry. Last one. So this, this shows a view straight down the middle. Um, and. What this one, this, this image represents, that, that's interesting is that here's your three entrances. Here's entrance to the office here, this entrance to the office here, entrance to retail here. Um, but there's that great park down the middle and a connected, um, boardwalk on the edge. Now I'm done. A sustainability is that this green roof here, sorry, and the, and, uh, solar panels that you've seen and we want to use this heavy timber.
Thank you, Mr. Path. Right. Uh, one quick question for you. On one of the renderings, I, I noticed the, the ramps for. The vehicle access on, off the site. And it looks like that's a, uh, pretty blank cement wall. So one thing I wanted to ask for, for you all to consider is, um, either adding, uh, something artistic or some sort of, um, like facing to that. So it's not a, a tall cement wall on either side of the site that might be visible and especially along the pathways.
And that's a great comment. And the renderings haven't caught up with our design yet.
Okay.
Um, so, so that there is, we're discussing, uh, putting where the, we believe, um, vines will grow.
Okay.
Green portion to it. And there's also lighting mounted on all of this. So there are layers on that wall as well to make it. A more engaging walk as you go by it. But absolutely, we identified the exact same thing you did.
Um, Chapin, thank you for bringing up the subject of that, 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 um, ramp going into the building, the inbound. So, um, assuming that there's an outbound, right? Where does that terminal?
Uh, I'm gonna go back to the plan. So this is the inbound and that's what we are looking at right now. We don't have a view, but we can create a view from the other side. That's exa- almost a mirror condition outbound on the other side.
All right. So there's the inbound and where's the outbound?
I'm on here. You see my cursor?
Yeah, I see. So my question is because that is like a two-way street and you, um, you know, you're gonna have tenants. You're going to have, um, people from the office building, of people from the residential building, um, merging into this traffic. And so what is going to be the system for easy flow?
So Adam, I, I believe we've vetted this in detail and we already have spoken to, to traffic, right? And more about which is inbound, which is outbound and how it merges. Do you wanna get into that today or, because we have a traffic engineer?
Yeah, I think he's on, uh, did we lose him? Brian? Do you wanna, can you hear us, Brian? Brian Dempsey?
Yes, uh, um. Okay, um, well, I'm not sharing the screen soon so that the bottom one is gonna be the entrance. And it's gonna be, it's a one-way entrance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and then the top one right now is gonna be the, the one way out. Um, we've had discussions with TMP. Um, they, they're still in the review process. Um, so they also asked us to look at it in reverse. Um, so having the top being an entrance and the bottom being the exit. And, um, that's in the part of this traffic study that was submitted to them that they're in the process of reviewing. Um, but they'd both be unsignaled. It's, it'd be one way in one direction or the other.
Right. And so I guess the, the question that I asked about traffic flow merging into this traffic in the morning during the morning commute. I take this way. It is, you know, stop and go, stop and go, especially when you have, um, you know, some flooding there from a previous rainfall. And I can imagine it would be, it would take a long time for your residents and tenants to exit and enter. What are you gonna do to ease the flow?
You're saying the flow is slow. For what reason though? Cause we did look at the driveways and one of the things they also had us look at is if the exit driveway is only a right turn out. Um, that was something else they wanted us to look at. So we, we've submitted different options to them that they're, they're reviewing.
Right. So is the, and so, so to enter, so the exit is gonna be right turn only?
No, it, right now it's, it's, you can make a left or a right turn out of there. Um. But they also had us look as an alternative is if only cars could only turn right out of there. They asked us to look at both conditions.
So, so that's still being studied?
Yeah, they're, they're still in their review process. They have not commented at all.
Right. Okay. And as far as a pedestrian walkway or a traffic light, is that part of your study?
Pedestrian walkway, you mean across the street or?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so right now, um. Uh, 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 as it says, I'm not sharing the screen, but the pedestrians would be crossing at the, um, existing crosswalk. The signalized intersection at Hanford Place.
Okay, so you, so, so this site is immediately across from Hanford Place?
So the Hanford Place basically bifurcates the site. And so the driveways are on each side of it. The pedestrian, um, the main pedestrian entrance to the site is, is opposite Hanford Place. So it's separated from where the vehicles would be coming in. And that's the path that was shown that you can take it all the way to the back. Um, and it also accesses the various buildings and such. And if you remember, we're sailing at, um, where he showed the ADA access also, that is right in that area.
Right. Um.
Yep, yep.
I, 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 I have concerns about traffic flow.
Now, there, there's also ways to get to the back on each side. So before you get to the driveway, either if you're coming from the north. There's the pedestrian sidewalk, um, right before the driveway. And then if you're coming from the south, again, there's a pedestrian sidewalk that leads to the back. And leads to the various buildings, um, before you get to the driveway here. So those pedestrians don't have to cross the driveway to get into the building or to get to the back.
Okay, that's great. And what about vehicle traffic?
In, as we studied on it, they showed top rated good levels of service. They'll come in and basically they're not crossing anything, um, and they'll be able to enter into the garage.
I'm gonna take another look at your rendering.
Rendering? Uh, any particular one, that one or front, this one?
Oh, the front one.
Uh, yeah, the, the Water Street, this one right here. Yeah. Um, and then the one facing Hanford.
Uh, the, yeah, the Han, Hanford is just about here.
Yeah, see, see the crosswalk is, is straight.
So right now there is a crosswalk there. And is there a traffic light there as well?
Yes, there's, there's a traffic signal there with pedestrian signals.
Okay, that's great. All right. And so your traffic, so, so your vehicles coming inbound up into your property. Is before you hit that pedestrian walkway, right?
Well, it depends which way you're coming. If you're coming, um, from the north, you would cross through the traffic signal. Um, and make the left, um, where there's a tri- there's a car at the bo- on the bottom right corner here.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's the way they would go in. But as they said, TMP asked us to look at the driveway, both on this side. Being the entrance or the driveway being before, um, before Hanford being the entrance. So they're still looking at the different alternatives.
Okay. All right. Still under review. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Dempsey, is there any street parking on, uh, Water Street?
Um, not, not really in this area, no.
And the two hundred and forty-nine spaces will serve the restaurants, the residential and the offices? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, it will. And we, we looked at it, we, the, TMP had us look at the shared parking. Process that Adam mentioned before also to look at the different uses. Um, and how, how they each could be handled parking wise.
And how many, um. Units of residential are in the, the, this facility?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine? So you have fifty-nine. Units and you have, is that a total of a hundred and ten square feet of office, uh, in both buildings?
So it's, it's gross, your parking regulations use a, use more of a net number. That was a gross figure.
Okay, but that's, but, but Adam, that is for both buildings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So. It doesn't seem like a lot of parking.
It, it requires.
Right.
It meets what's required, but it also meets looking at the IT, um. And you are also two blocks from the train station. There are the buses in that area also. And there is hope that, you know, some of the people who live and work in, will also work in the area and vice versa.
I just know from experience of trying to run office, an office building with limited parking is somewhat of a challenge. But, uh, I understand where you're coming from. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and with respect to traffic, I'll just, I'll just add that, well, obviously we have, Brian is working with TMP and we want to. Do everything that we can within our power to, to make sure traffic is flowing smoothly. Um, you know, and you can confirm with your, your law department, but this is a site plan review. On a site plan review, actually, traffic is not a consideration. Um, that's a special permit review only. Um, on, for a site plan review, the only reason that you, you consider traffic is just for your locations, your points of access. For ingress and egress, but not actually for, for traffic on the roadway network. Um, because by virtue of it being a site plan, it presumptively presumed to be acceptable.
And you're working with TMP?
Yeah, we're gonna try to.
Well, it's heard that, that TMP understands what you're doing and is working with you to facilitate the traffic.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Um, Galen, if I may?
Sure.
And also please note, um, I did join the meeting at seven oh one. Thank you. Um, I think my questions are directed to, uh, Mr. Pather, but if somebody else wants to answer. Um, I love the water use on the ground floor and I'm curious, um, I. Water use, not retail shop, um, use, water use. So if, if the use was, um, some type of organization, whether they had kayaks, boat, motorboats. Sailboats, what have you, watercraft, uh, where would their docks be? And who, who sort of owns those docks and how are you going to lease them out? I'm, I'm assuming the dock belonged to the property.
I'll let Henry.
Yeah.
Um, Spinnaker onto that and he knows that better than most.
For the record, Henry Conrad from Spinnaker Real Estate Partners. So we. I, the, we will own the dock slips as the owner of the property. And depending on what the water related uses and their need for dock slips, we will accommodate some portion of those dock slips to them. For example, if you're talking about kayaks, where are they gonna be able to launch from? We would accommodate that on the property. We haven't found a tenant yet. Um, but. As is described, whatever that tenant will be, will have some tie into the waterfront and we wanna make sure that. Um, they're gonna be able to thrive as a business. And if that requires dock slippage, we're gonna make sure to accommodate that. If insofar as whatever that tenant, um, doesn't require all of the dock slippage. It'll be some sort of combination of probably transient slippage for people to, to, uh, to be able to access the restaurant that we have there. Or potentially we could lease a dock slip to, um, uh, you know, a resident of the building. It'd be probably some combination of all of those things.
Okay, thank you. How many approximate, if you have an average size motorboat or sailboat, how many slips do you have?
So there's fourteen dock slips and they vary in size that we can accommodate for length of boat. Based on the proximity to the federal channel line in the river. So at the southern part of the property, I think we can probably get a, something like a thirty-two foot boat. And, and a dock slip, yeah, you can see there. Um, our, our property moving north becomes a little narrower in relation to the federal. Channel, which is that dash line on the backside of all of those boats. So that's as far as we can build a dock out to. Once you get farther north, it becomes a little bit of a smaller, um. Maybe like a twenty-foot boat that can fit there, which could also offer a boat and some kayak storage or something like that.
Sure. It would not be ideal for a rowing club because we do have a couple of other rowing, really, you know, strong rowing clubs up the river. But this space wouldn't accommodate their needs.
Um. From a.
Like the size of the shells, they're too long?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Extend over the, my understanding is the boat's gonna, if it's a longer boat, it can extend over the federal channel line. But we just can't build out past that.
Gotcha.
And this dock configuration is subject to, to deep approval.
Okay, thank you. And just one more question. Um, did you put the office space on the water side? Because you have those tenants already in hand as opposed to putting the residential on the water side? And the office space on the street?
Um, Adam, you can speak, you can speak to the residential. I believe we have to be within a certain proximity to, to Water Street for residential.
No, I, I, I think we, I, I can't recall. Matt may know, we've, we flipped it back and forth a few times in the process.
Uh, I'll say from a design point of view, we look at it both ways. Um, we just thought that, uh, we'll get, we'll get in the best of both worlds. You have in these, these two buildings face directly to the water and still maintain a view corridor for as many residential units as we could through. But we absolutely look at it both ways.
And, and to further answer your question, um. To, Adam touched on this earlier. There's a lot of going on, I think, and, and when people talk about office that, you know, it's vacant, there's work from home. Um, you, you know, office sizes are shrinking and that is true, but for a class A really unique office space. And that's what we're creating here. So to be able to attract in a, a high quality tenant who's going to wanna place their business in Norwalk. We, we have to give them something that is, that they can't find somewhere else. Uh, the vacancy rates for class A office are exceptionally low. What they would call class C or class B office are, are pretty high. And that's why there's a lot of vacant office spaces, you know, in, in, um, corporate parks farther north. And we wanna make sure that this, this space gets filled out. And frankly, we, we don't have a tenant yet, but we do have a lot of. Uh, very positive feedback after we publish this application of, of businesses that either wanna move to Norwalk or. Uh, relocate within Norwalk, um, based on the design and the location. So we're feeling fairly positive about it.
That's great. Also, if the residential people definitely want their parking. That's great. Also, if the residential people definitely want their parking over their roof or under their roof, whichever way you wanna say it, and then the office people are probably willing to walk a little bit further to get to their office, their parking is in one building and their office is gonna be in a different space. So it puts the parking on the street closer to the street where it probably should be.
And just to touch on, I'll jump back to the parking a little bit for Diana, um Commissioner Lenkowski, the um, we do find that there is really substantial uh benefit to having both residential and office as shared uses on a plot like this because the residential tenants leave during the day to go to their work. I mean, some might be working here, but a lot of them also will inevitably end up leaving, taking their cars elsewhere. Office tenants can come in. So and then when the office tenants leave, the residential tenants come in and on the weekend, there's no office tenants there. So there's it it's a really um efficient use of space for us to develop office and residential close to each other. Uh, as opposed to, you know, if you had this much retail next to this residential space, it wouldn't really work because all those retail tenants come in on the weekend. That doesn't work with residential tenants who are there on the weekend at the same time. Those those are conflicting uses, but we've had a lot of success um with the style development. So we think that we have sufficiently parked the building.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And and Commissioner Langas, I'm not sure if you were asking this question, but um all of these four cores give you access to the four buildings. So you could park and get to those two office buildings from those covered spaces.
Oh, okay, thank you. I just want, I'm curious about the landscaping too. Um, since you are right there next to the saltwater, so I would imagine that most of your plant material will be saltwater tolerant?
Absolutely. Um, we had that discussion while we were designing and Eric Greens, who'll be back on our next our next call, will go through the actual species. But the idea was to try to make it as as durable and and make it look like it it was there all along along the water. Lots of high grasses and so on, like you see in this image.
Nice. Thank you.
All right, if you don't have more for us, we'll like move on, but if you've got more, we'll keep answering.
Not hearing any objection. Thank you so much, Attorney Blank.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um.
Thank you, everybody.
Do we need to take uh action on uh saying that we're gonna hold a public hearing?
Well, I I have another question as well for Brian. And that is, I mean, I heard uh what their attorney said uh regarding an architectural review. But again, given the uh size and potential importance of this project, if um uh we are permitted, I certainly would want to see an architectural review of this project.
So I I took a look. The the language in the regs do sort of allow you to allow uh require an architectural peer review, I guess, for any project. Um, the only concern I I have with doing that is the marine commercial zone is a little bare on what the architecture of the building has to look like. Um, whereas opposed to, you know, this typical C D four, we have much more uh detail on what a building has to look like. Um, the amount of facade, glazing, the materials, and it's a little bit less so in the marine commercial. And then the only other thing I could think of is there's if it were to go to an architectural peer review, I don't know what uh the peer reviews uh uh what they'd be kind of basing their review on. Um, whereas in the redevelopment areas, they have a plan from the redevelopment agency to say kind of what building should look like and how they should be designed. Um, so that that's kind of all up in the air for the marine commercial zone.
Need to do anything at this point regarding a public hearing?
Um, I I I think it'd be helpful if you did a a vote on holding the hearing and then we can set the date. Um, so we kind of officially get that on the record.
Okay, um, let's let's then hold a vote on whether or not we think it's necessary to hold a public hearing. I would still with a project this large.
I'll make a a motion that we hold a public hearing on the project.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, we can do it by hand? All those opposed? Okay, so we will have a public hearing and Brian, you will work with uh the applicant to schedule it, right?
Yeah, I would um. At this point, it'll be either your September third or September seventeenth meeting, but um I'll discuss with Adam.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I'm I'm still concerned uh about not doing an architectural uh review. I mean, I personally, I find this to be a handsome project. Um, but I hate the precedent uh of not doing a review on a project of this size. Um, you know, we did it for the housing literally uh across the street. Uh, the the unit, the glass units that are going in there, which is certainly much uh overall is much smaller in scale. Um, yeah.
What was based uh uh upon for that uh review?
Well, that one, I think, was in the redevelopment area, but not all but not all the, not all the reviews we've done have been in the redevelopment area. Uh, the stuff that we did for B L T uh was not in the redevelopment area, was it?
Well, we we wrote that reg uh for their specific development that required the the peer review as part of it.
Well, I I I think if we are not going to do um an architectural peer review, we need to look at the regulations um and uh make a change that permits us or or requires us to do an architectural review on a project of this scale. Um, I just uh I'm not comfortable uh without doing that.
Yeah, part of it too could be, you know, in including the form based regs similar to what we have in the other zones to the the marine commercial. And it could be specific to, you know, mixed-use development such as this, so that we're not kind of applying that to marine, like, you know, a marina, for example.
Right.
Hey, are we are we ready to move on to the next matter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next. We have twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three, Cam S P R. B P C Capital Management ten, sixth LLC in care of Redford Craighead. And this is simply for the approval of a village district peer review expenditure. It's not for anything else in connection with the matter.
Yeah, I'll jump in quick. Um, and Adam is here representing the the owner. I didn't ask him to prepare anything for it for the meeting. Um, this is just because the project is located in the East Avenue Village District, which requires a village district review. Um, so we'd just like to get that process started by having you approve that expenditure.
Hey, is there a motion to?
I'll move and and take the opportunity to point out, we're talking about eleven units here. We're doing a review when we're not doing a review of a hundred thousand feet of office and uh fifty-some-odd housing units.
I'll second acknowledging what uh Louis said as well.
Okay. Uh uh, we do, Brian, can you do a?
If you wanna do a show of hands, I'm I'm okay with a show of hands.
Yeah, show of hands, okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? I can't see everybody, Brian.
You're nobody, yep, uh unanimous. Thanks, there is.
Everybody voted yes?
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the public hearings for tonight. We have twenty twenty-five dash forty-three S P Cam, the Norwalk Country Club Company and Shore and Country Club Inc. At two twenty-two Gregory Boulevard. And new pro shop and associated siding group. This is a public hearing that matter, and I understand that Diane, Diana will be with you. Who is here representing the uh Shoring Country Club?
I am Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Liz Suchey, Partner Cardi Torrance, Sanda Kennedy. Our office is ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. Present tonight is also Joanie Cash, the club manager, Jeff Byington, club president, Mella Kernan and Daniela Hoffer, project architects with Rogers McCag and Andy Sumalides, project civil engineer with Ty and Bond, excuse me, with Land Tech. Applications for special permit and coastal site plan review for the project. Um, with the associated architectural, engineering and landscape plans were submitted on May twenty-eighth. Neighbors were notified of the submission on June fifth, the certificate of mailing and the certificate is was returned to staff. Neighbors were notified of the public hearing on July first. The green cards and return letters were delivered to staff today and should be in the file. And lastly, signs were posted on Gregory Boulevard and Dorland Street on or about July one to notify neighbors of tonight's hearing, and those signs were still in existence up yesterday and this morning. So the applicant is both the Norwalk Country Club, which is the owner of the property, and Shore and Country Club, which has a long-term lease for the property. It is at two twenty Gregory Boulevard, District Three, Lot Block seventy-two, Lot Two. The lot is about eight point four acres in size. Andy Sumalides, could you screen share the survey if you could? That would be great. The property is owned C D one M as in Mary and is it is entirely within the coastal area management zone. It has designations of both A E twelve, A E fourteen and V E fourteen. Um, Shore and Country Club was formed around nineteen thirty-three and, as I said, is a tenant under longstanding lease and it has been long a long, it has long been a water-dependent use of the property. The existing conditions include the fourteen thousand square foot, two-and-a-half-story clubhouse, which is on the left side of the property where the cursor is. Uh, it has dining and gathering facilities that was constructed around nineteen oh eight. The bath house has uh two hundred and twenty lockers, changing areas and dining space that was constructed around twenty seventeen. There are ten tennis courts right now now spread out throughout the property. A ninety-eight slip marina on the eastern side of the property in Charles Creek. There is also an existing seawall, which there are no changes proposed to that seawall. The club is generally open, as many of you may know, from March through December. High season is June through August. There are about fifteen staff from January through March, sixty staff from March through May, and then September through December, and about a hundred employees during the high season, June one to August thirty-one. Wanted to give you just a little bit of background so the understanding of the club, well, how it operates and how is it has existed since the early nineteen hundreds. The image in front of you to it currently is what exists today, parking fields, the various locations of the tennis courts, the pool, the kiddie pool, the bath house and the clubhouse and the marina, of course, on the right. The proposals before you are a special permit and coastal site plan application. And the reason that this this is coming before you is the Shore and Country Club has embarked on a master plan to upgrade and modernize the club facilities and grounds, better serve the members and preserve the overall character and operational continuity of this club. So this application before you is the first component part of that master plan and it comes to you in three component parts. First, we propose a new FEMA compliant about a fifteen hundred square foot pro shop generally in the area of the existing pro shop where Andy is circulating. Where Andy is circling circling, that pro shop would meet or exceed the minimum FEMA twelve-foot requirement plus two feet, so we we would be fully FEMA compliant. We would reconfigure the northwest parking lot, remove all the tennis courts and those the ones that exist to the north of the clubhouse. They would be relocated to the parking field on the northern side of the property adjacent to Gregory Boulevard. And where those two tennis courts would be removed, a new parking uh layout would be created there, so parking would be more um adjacent to the clubhouse and function better. And then the tennis courts would all generally be in the same location with great visibility to the to the pro shop. All work that is proposed is landward of the coastal jurisdiction line outside any tidal wetlands and on previously disturbed and improved uh areas. The project is consistent with the Coastal Area Management Act. Um, as both your staff and the Harbor Management Commission have noted, in fact, the Harbor Management Commission noted that the proposal was consistent with the Harbor Management Plan. And I believe all of the sign-offs have been received from the respective Code Enforcement Administration Committee uh entities such as uh T M P, W P C A, D P W, Fire and South Norwalk Electric and Water. That's a basic overview of what the club is, what the three components of this special permit and coastal site plan are all about. So at this time, if you would, I'd like Mister Sumalides to screen share his site plan, walk you through the uh stormwater management, drainage and other component parts from a civil engineering perspective. And then he would be followed by Mella Kernan, who will walk you through the component parts of the um pro shop. Any questions of me? I'm of course happy to answer them. And if you have any of Andy or Mella as they move forward with their presentation, we look forward to answering those questions and also answering questions that may come from the public. I do want to make two things known. Um, I have not received any comments or questions from members of the public and there were many that were notified. In fact, all of them, the owners of the condominium complex to the north received letters, at least were sent letters. And I think there were two, maybe three, letters of support that were sent to staff by individuals who live, I believe, on Gregory Boulevard. Um, at the end of public comment, I would ask that I be given some time to rebut if necessary and also to summarize if necessary. So Mister Sumalides, could you take it from here?
All right. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Andy Sumalides. I'm a principal and professional engineer with Land Tech. Just gonna share our site plan quickly and kind of point out some of those elements that were just discussed. So we're looking to redevelop is what's highlighted in in blue here, just to get you oriented again. Long Island Sound down here on the bottom, Charles Creek to the right, Gregory Boulevard and Dorland Street here. Um, and here's the main entrance to the clubhouse. So what we're looking to do is really um reorient what's kind of already existing, right? So you saw that in the aerial, there's an existing tennis court here um with existing parking here. We're looking to take that tennis court and move it over here with the other three courts that currently exist today. Um, and in replace of where those tennis courts were, was to provide additional parking in place of that tennis court. This area encompasses about two and a half acres. Um, and as part of the master plan, it's circulation. Um, easier access into the club. Um, there's right now a very larger um island in the middle, some reorientation of that. Um, but essentially, the main entrance is exactly the same, the exit's the same, and it's really rejiggering of the parking and tennis. Here is where that new pro shop is, which will not be FEMA compliant, currently exists a non-FEMA compliant structure there. Um, so this will be uh a nice new amenity for the club. And you'll hear more about that from Mella in a second. The huge improvement here, um, again, when you saw in the aerial, was basically a large sea of asphalt and not many landscaped trees um with the new code and new parking requirements. You know, you there's necessary landscaped elements that are required when designing a new parking lot. So that resulted in a net decrease of over ten thousand square feet of existing impervious area. So that was our first look at this project. How do we reduce impervious areas for water quality measures? That's, you know, one of the first low-impact development features um that folks look at from a stormwater perspective. Secondly, then, we look to implement additional measures. So what we did here in the parking areas, what's hatched here is these bio retention, like mini bio gardens, call them, um, like you've seen, like rain gardens, so water will she flow into these areas and infiltrate right into the ground and get treated. This area here um around the tennis court and the parking associated with it, we are capturing it via a couple of catch basins and into a underground detention system. I'll zoom in a little bit so you could see that better. So what we're proposing here are forty-two of those Coltech three thirties, um, a fairly large. A fairly large system, again, to mitigate essentially existing impervious, right? This existing impervious is going into basically Long Island Sound untreated. It gets piped into the Town Strange System and then right out into Long Island Sound. So what we're doing now is capturing it, treating the water quality volume, and then discharging it back out into Long Island Sound. As you folks are aware, when you're on the coast, you don't really need to reduce the storm events. What you want to do is treat the water and get it out as fast as possible for the other storm events upgrading to this to get out at a later time. So you really want to just treat it and discharge out. You're not really looking to detain it for any storm event. And that's what we're tasked with. So that essentially is, in a nutshell, our stormwater improvements here. In terms of utilities, it's pretty straightforward. The club is currently serviced by public sewer and water, so it's pretty straightforward utility connection. There is an existing little shed here that has mechanical electrical equipment in here. That will now be housed within the new pro shop, and you'll hear that from Mella also. So there's some great improvements from FEMA compliance and from from a stormwater perspective. So I'm happy to answer any questions at this time or turn it over to Mella.
And Andy, excuse me, Mr. Sumalides, before you you exit, would you just mention the acoustical fencing around the tennis courts? And before he does, so I just wanted to let the commission know that tennis play at the where the courts are located right now are doing during daylight hours, there isn't night play, and there is no proposal to install lights so that that could be lit tennis or pickleball play and after after dark.
Sure. So these tennis courts will be actually multi-use. So we're looking for to create two asphalt regulation tennis courts, but then can be converted to pickleball play as well. We've dealt with this many a times with considerations from noise from pickleball. It has a distinct sound when playing pickleball. I just want to note pickleball is currently played at the club at these two courts, one and two, which are being relocated. But being conscientious of that sound, what we proposed is along the northern and western boundaries of the fence is what's called an acousta block, which is essentially a very thick plastic. And I'm going to share right now, just so you guys can have a visual of it. So that's essentially what it is. Here's a chain link fence, and it's this thick plastic that gets affixed to it, and it deadens the sound. We've had huge success in it specifically for for pickleball. We recently did pickleball courts at Birchwood Country Club here in Westport and use this same exact application there. If you go on their website, you could see they specifically have it for pickleball. We've used it around mechanical equipment as well to deaden sound. So it is a tried and true proven method, and it reduces it by about fifty percent of what it does. So it's just, I think, belts and suspenders for this application, being sensitive to residential neighbors. So we propose that. You know, thick plastic membrane along those channeling fence to deaden the sound.
Thanks for sharing that, Mr. Sumalides. Is the view that we had a moment ago, would that be the view from the exterior of the court or the interior of the court?
That is from the interior of the court.
Interior of the court. Thank you.
Yep.
Now, with the new parking lot that you're putting in, you're essentially putting in a new parking area. Is there any chance of putting solar panels over that parking field?
So we, Liz, you want to answer that for the soul? Yeah, we can talk about solar week. So there's an E V requirement as well, and I think that was as part of rewriting of the tax amendment, various stages. E Vs in flood zones were removed because it's just not feasible. I think that's so. Did you? Are you asking for like canopies over the parking stalls with solar? No, we did not. Look at that.
Would you be willing to look at that? I mean, that's something all over the city that we're trying to accomplish is to put solar panels, canopies over parking lots. And where there's already existing parking lot, it's hard to go back and redo it, but you're putting in a new parking lot here.
Yeah, and I guess because there's not a huge building component to this phase, I would say. I'm not sure what where we're connecting that electrical system right now in terms of, you know, I think we could look at that when we're looking at renovating the clubhouse perhaps and introducing solar on that. That would make more sense, I would say, and then we can implement that as part of the redesign of the clubhouse. I'm not sure what we're charging with these solars over the parking lot and and where we're connecting to it for, you know, a net benefit for the club, I would say, or the city.
Mr. Sumalides, I like that you're putting all these Coltech drains over by your replaced tennis courts. I'm wondering if you are doing permeable paving in the new parking area or permeable pavers, one or the other. The proximity to the water is a concern to me. And I mean, your property is pretty exposed for any type of hurricane flooding, et cetera. So I imagine that might come into play, actually, Galen, with putting solar panels right next to the water. Might be in a storm zone, and I mean, we're clearly in a flood zone. I'm not sure if you're in the velocity zone there. It just trying to make whatever runoff goes into the sound as clean as possible. And I don't know if your other courts are heart true, but I know that stuff, when it gets into storm drains, it freezes up, and then it prevents the drains from working. We have that problem at one of the Little League fields. So any thoughts you have on that? I would appreciate your time. Thank you.
So what we did here, just to highlight, and you'll you can see it more in the landscaping plan, is you could see here, instead of, you know, your typical island with a strike down the middle, and then making these, you know, potentially pervious spots. What we did was actually add additional green space to these, right? So we have this middle island now that's actually green space. We beefed up this island that's green space. We made this island bigger. And then there's a bunch of green space here between the edge of the tennis courts, which is this fence line, and the parking area. So this whole area is all green space. So instead of pervious parking, or, you know, pervious asphalt, which we have used before, you know, and it works well, it's just, you know, you have to maintain it and and you get and you got to keep up with it, or it doesn't stay pervious. So what we did here and what we looked at was really reducing impervious surfaces overall. So in this two and a half acre por- portion of redevelopment, we've reduced impervious surfaces by over ten thousand square feet. So we've added introduced ten thousand square feet of lawn area here.
Right. Well, I do know that that pervious pavement does work quite well. So I would ask you to take it into consideration. I know it is a more costly paving material, but given your proximity to the water, I I would encourage you to take whatever is the most environmentally friendly step.
Sure.
Thank you.
I just wanted to respond to Chairwoman Wells' comment with respect to solar panels. In the regulations, and I can, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Baker, the sustainability requirements typically relate to new structures of five thousand square feet or more. The entirety of the new structure is the pro shop, which is about fifteen hundred square feet. So I think Mr. Sumalides' comment is correct, that when we come back with the next phase of this master plan, there's probably going to be a very good likelihood that we will have to incorporate sustainability requirements such as either rooftop solar or other solar type components at that stage. But right now, this is all about a fifteen hundred square foot structure and relocation of tennis courts from one side of the property to another side of the property where it's currently parking and to create an upgraded parking lot that complies not only with stormwater management requirements, the city requirements, but also all of the landscaping requirements new to the code.
Yeah, I I know it wouldn't be required. I was just wondering, since you were creating a new parking area, would you be willing to consider it as a benefit to the environment and a benefit to the club as a whole?
Well, I would think that the, and I don't want to speak directly for Mr. Byington and Mr. Nekash. I think we they would consider it, but to make it anything that's obligatory, it that's not consistent with the regulations. And given the the small nature of the project at this phase, I I think it should wait if and if at all till when we get come back with the larger development program to enhance the club at some point in the future. Mr. Byington, or I'm you're online. Is there?
Yeah. Yeah, feasibility of it at this point seems to me to be just a little bit early in the process. This is a small phase in the master plan to really address site, a lot of the site issues, enhance, we're reducing impervious coverage. We're enhancing landscaping, and we're moving some some tennis courts in preparation of phases that are happening down the line that I think could incorporate what Liz is talking about which Commissioner Wells was talking about as well. But at this point, I think you know, this is this is an early phase in the process, very little building. It's really a renovation, slight expansion of a pro shop that's not FEMA compliant. So I think our phase is fairly, you know, this this site plan is pretty extensive in terms of addressing everything that zoning is looking for.
Commissioner Wells, we can certainly keep it in mind as we move forward, since it's a concern of yours, and and incorporate that concept with the next phase. I think that's probably appropriate. If anyone, if anyone has any other questions for Mr. Sumalides or myself, be happy to answer them. If not, we'll turn it over to Mella Kernan, who's joining us direct from Ireland.
Briefly before that, one thing I'll add on the soil cover parking, and staff may be able to speak to this more specifically. But we have heard from other projects that have implemented the soil cover parking that it has worked out quite well for them. Some of them have expanded that use. So I just wanted to share that along for consideration as you guys are exploring that.
One last thing I neglected to indicate that Bill Rutherford, the landscape architect, is also present this evening. Mella, it's
You muted, Mella. There we go. Thanks, Brian. Can you, I'll go back to my site plan. Can you see this? Brian? Yeah. You can see the site plan. Okay, one other thing that I wanted to say about the commissioner who had the concern about the heart true running off was that right now, the blacktop currently goes right up to the property line right here at the salt marsh. And the proposal here is to introduce lawn here between the end of the new asphalt tennis courts so that the any sort of runoff from the from the new courts would basically have a buffer zone between the courts and the existing property line and the salt marsh that's right here. So that was, that was just one other thing that was overseen. We also have added in more green space here along here, planted area here to just sort of really embellish the the planted area and change the nature of what is currently just a complete sea of asphalt over in this area. And Bill Rutherford is on on the call. He is the landscape architect and will be able to help you understand the project. So this is a FEMA A E twelve zone. It is not a high velocity zone, so we're not affected by limo, even though there is a line of coastal coastal A E zone going through lower down on the site. The current tennis pro shop not only is not FEMA compliant, but is also not A D A compliant. So the new FEMA compliant pro shop will be elevated up to elevation fourteen, which is base flood elevation plus two feet, which is the requirement in Norwalk. The the site over here is going to be at about elevation seven point five and then come up to about elevation eight right here at the base. So we have made it sort of in, I sort of took the idea of the Norwalk that are the traditional Metro North train station, where you have sort of the the street level on one side and the track level on the other to try and get some way to sort of break the elevation and not feel like people were coming up a huge flight of stairs. So the idea here is that you can come up a half a flight of stairs here to a landing and then up further stairs here where you're standing at elevation fourteen, which is three and a half feet below the top of the tennis fences, which are along here. This allows you then to use the top of the tennis fence as your guard rail. Obviously, there will be a real guard rail here, but there will be sort of the opportunity to stand here on this viewing deck looking over and viewing the existing tennis courts, which are their championship courts, three, four, and five, which are right here. The idea is to provide an accessible, A D A accessible pro shop so that you can come up a ramp along here, which is planted along this way with salt tolerant planting to break the sort of view of the new building being high above the adjacent grade. And then come in here to an A D A wheelchair lamp ramp wheelchair lift, which brings you up the last few feet up to this elevation fourteen or walk up and walk up the stairs to the last few steps up here. The idea here is that this is the tennis pro with the new location of tennis courts, one and two being over here. From this vantage point, he will be able to oversee all ten tennis courts at the club. In addition, there's a small retail store here which will not just be for tennis, but it will just be for anything that the merchandise that the that the club will want to sell to the members. And that will replace what they have currently. And then there's a small change A D changing room here and just a little checkout space here. So just as a very small, you know, merchandise selling area. Then we're providing toilet facilities, A D A compliant again for the women here on this side and the men here. And then a drinking water fountain, both dual-level drinking water fountain, which is also A D A accessible. As Andy mentioned earlier, there's a there's an existing shed that's right here. It's down at elevation eight. And in that shed, there's a there's a transformer. And that transformer is well below base flood elevation. And the transformer is for the power for the lights for these tennis courts, the lights for the parking lot and the lights for the pool. And the idea is to bring that transformer out and back up into this area in here into this building so that it's not just above base flood elevation plus two, but it's also above the natural electrical datum plane, which is requirement in in FEMA locations. So that's what this closet, utility closet is here. And underneath here will be open space, more than likely, because we've done soil testing here, this building is going to be on pilings. Like I said, this is not a it's not a velocity zone, but it is a FEMA zone. So we will have to make sure that the it will be a wet flooded area, so there will be flood vents in this area to let the water flow through. The club will have access to it so that if they want to use some, you know, equipment or whatever to store when there's no flooding going on, they can use some storage in here, but the idea is to evacuate it in the event of a storm coming up. The roof plan is just to could to roof the whole area, have a gable facing the tennis courts over the over over the pro shop window. And then this is sort of this Metro North idea that I had of this sort of asymmetrical roof line so that you basically come down closer when you're on the lower level, and then you're up higher when you're at the upper level. This is underneath the underneath the pro shop. This is technically a story, but because it's in the FEMA zone, it's not usable space at all. It cannot be usable. This is the viewing deck area here and then overlooking the existing tennis courts down here. This is the idea here of a very simple framed structure. And we will have the you arrive here, you come up to the landing, on up to the landing. That's up at the on the other side of the building, up at the viewing deck area, very simple frame. This is a residential M zone. This is a C D one M zone, so we're really trying to hold on to the scale of the of of the residential nature of the of the neighborhood with wood siding, asphalt shingle roofing. And this through view here where this is actually open all the way through, that's the A D A lift coming up here. And then this is the view from the tennis courts with the pro shop, the tennis court light, the tennis court, sorry, the tennis court clock to sort of let members know that their time is up. And opportunities for some bulletin boards along the the walls to just document the the various events that are going on. And then Um, and then this is the view where you come up from the parking lot, up a half a flight and then up a second flight. Or you're coming from the tennis courts and you can come up and back up again here. Um, and then this is the view here, um, from the clubhouse and where you can go in. We, we put this building in here. There's an existing beach house. It's called, um, it's a rather large structure. And what we really wanted to emphasize was the difference in scale between what's being proposed and what is over here right now. If there's any concern as to what the difference is in between the two buildings. So this is our building here. Um, we're at elevation. Um, we're, we're thirty one feet above a jo- adjacent grade at the ridge, um, which is more than compliant. Um, and then this is an old, uh, this is our landscaping plan, which Bill Rutherford can talk to. Um, there was a request about screening this corner of the site from the staff. So rather than continuing the white vinyl fence that's along Gregory Boulevard, we decided to extend the privet hedge that's been proposed around here, which this is a racket's club and a privet hedge is very sort of, um, typical for, for racket's clubs to have. Um, Andy mentioned that we're putting the, uh, acousta block along the two sides here. We're also on from the parking, we're going to be adding some privet along this side here. These are all salt tolerant, um, plantings with some cedars then here to basically screen the view from the street this way. And then, like I said, lawn along here. And there will be, there will be sidewalks along here. Uh, we were just going to continue the language of the club, which has been a brick, but if, if that needs to be an impervious paper brick, we can definitely look into that. And seventy reason why not? Um, and we've, you know, rearranged the parking. Now you come in, instead of going all the way around a circle, you'll come in, you'll have the opportunity to drop off at the clubhouse and come back around and park here for the clubhouse. Um, as Andy said, there's, you know, there we've introduced shade trees here. Introduced some, this is a grass area. There's a large tree here which we'll be keeping. Um, and then putting some taxes and some, and some shrubs here to screen these cars here from the people coming in and some flowers. Bill can speak to that. Um, and then this is our building down here, our new building here with some more grass here, um, some, some shade trees. Um, we also looked at the, um, landscape lighting. So currently a lot of the landscape lighting, like I said, this is all down around elevation six to eight down in this location. So we are between six and eight feet below base flood elevation. So a lot of the lighting that's on this, on the site right now is bollard lighting, which is well below the flood plain. So we've introduced some new taller, um, lamppost type lights. And, um, as is required by the new zoning regulations, we had a landscape, um, lighting, uh, designer do the photometric study to make sure that we were maintaining the lighting levels that are required by the new zoning regs. So some of these lighting come in here through the existing gate. And then there are some lights around the, the site to basically keep the light, um, the lighting levels for safety. But at the same time, um, maintain the lighting levels required by the, by the city. So that is the lighting design. This is the existing gate post light here. And then, um, this is on our building using the same language where we can on the front of the building, these bracketed mounted fixtures along here to illuminate the walkway up for safety. And then just some lighting on the front of the building here to, um, light the, the viewing terrace over here. These bracketed lights will also be here. And then this is this fix fixture here. The connection is up at this point, which is above the base flood elevation plus two, which is the, um, the national electric code. So that is our building. If you want me to go to any particular drawing, let me know. And, um, if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Kernan, uh, not only for joining us at so early in the morning in Ireland, but, um, for your presentation. Uh, question on the privet, how, um, how tall is the privet?
I'm going to let Bill Rutherford answer that. Bill's on the call and he's, he's our landscape architect.
Thank you.
Okay, um, William Rutherford, uh, landscape architect, uh, Old Greenwich, Connecticut. Um, yeah, the, the privet is, I'm just going to read from, uh, it's, uh, three and a half to four feet in height. We'll be putting it in app.
Thank you.
Anyone have any specific additional questions for Ms. Kernan, Mr. Rutherford, or Mr. Sumalides? Okay. Well, that concludes our presentation in chief for you and we look forward to any questions, comments and, um, other, uh, questions you may have of either you or the public. Thank you.
Uh, Galen, you're muted. You're muted. Yep.
Thank you. So now we'll go forward to the public hearing portion uh, of the evening. Everyone who wish wants to speak, you can speak once, you can speak as long as you would like to, but you must say everything in you think is important in this one opportunity to speak. Also be aware that you must give us your name and address when you begin to speak. Uh, Brian, can you see if anybody is here and bring them over?
Sure. So if anyone would like to speak regarding this application, you can use the raise your hand tool. It's located at the bottom of your screen. You would click that once. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine. One more time, uh, if you'd like to speak, click the raise your hand button once, uh, it's located at the bottom of your screen. And if you're on a phone, you'd hit star nine.
Seeing none, Ms. Wells.
Hey, thank you. Well, in that event, we will close the public hearing portion of the of the matter. Uh, does anybody have any further questions for Attorney Sutche? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Before that, uh, Amelia, did you have anything else on, on this application?
Yes. So for the most part, um, my, any comments I had were, uh, responded to by the applicant. I do think in general, the plan is consistent with the goals and policies of the, uh, the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. I do not believe it would have any adverse impacts on coastal resources. The only, um, issue of determining compliance with the zoning regulations came up as, um, the applicant had mentioned with the screening along the northern property boundary as the regulations require that waterfront clubs uh, be effectively screened from view of adjacent streets and properties, which is vague. And I had suggested extending that vinyl fence, um, where there is currently a chain link fence to comply with that. And the applicant had proposed some landscaping to address that. So that would be my, aside, that's my one question for the commission is if you feel that landscaping is sufficient to screen the property from adjoining properties and streets. And that was the condition that I had highlighted in the draft resolution to get your, your thoughts on.
Thank you. The, uh, the update, I saw your other comment was about, um, updating the parking chart, uh, I guess to the applicant. Was that updated in the?
Yes, I got an email at the beginning of this meeting. They'd sent the correct one. So the plan just says that they need to submit that. So they've, they've just already complied with that condition.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you.
We have, we have nothing further to add at this point. The standards of review for both sites, special permit and coastal site plan have been discussed in our application. We asked you take judicial notice of that and you have a, already have had a long hearing and have another one after this. If not two, so we won't go through each and every standard of review. It's already set forth in our application. We are, we appreciate that your time tonight. We appreciate staff's time and hope that you can act on this application this evening.
To answer your earlier question, Galen, uh, I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Wait a second.
No, second.
Okay, Amelia, do you have a resolution for us?
I do. So again, just the somewhat standard conditions of the coastal site plan review approvals with that one, um, condition number six highlighted to either keep, remove, or amend as you see fit.
Amelia, Amelia, just, okay, can we go back to six? Just a question about that. Um, uh, I thought I heard in their presentation, they put up, uh, that vinyl fencing over, uh, chain link fencing. Uh, am I correct about that?
I don't think I caught that in their presentation.
There's no chain link fence, uh, Joseph Nakas, general manager.
Um,
Sorry, Joe.
Sorry, you can't speak now. Um, that's what I thought I heard. And i- if I'm right about that, then um, you want to keep the chain link fence and put the vinyl fencing over it.
Vinyl fencing is just, uh, around the court, the pickleball court.
So should that say, uh, replace and or cover the chain link fence?
That would be fine.
Yeah, the vinyl fencing, if I, my memory serves me correctly, runs along Gregory Boulevard. And, and then they're adding privet on by the gray sound barrier.
Would you like me to pull up the plan or an aerial image or anything like that for you guys to look at?
Yes.
Yeah, it might be a good idea.
All right.
And while we're waiting for, um, Amelia to do that, I'd like to add something in there. It may be talking about the permeable pavement.
So this is an aerial. We're looking mostly west. This is Gregory Boulevard here. Dorland Street here, the club is, you know, the main part of the image. Uh, the vinyl fence runs along the adjoining property on Dorland Street, along Dorland Street itself, and then up Gregory. And then this is the property line I'm referring to. One of the, um, probably the survey, not the site plan had depicted there was a chain link fence in at least some portion of it. That may be incorrect, but, um, you know, as of Thursday, April seventeenth of this year, there was no vinyl fence extending. So this is the area um, of staff concern that this should be screened from this adjoining property as per the regulations. And this is what, this was the revised plan that the applicant had submitted. So sorry, well, that, that loads. Now we're looking the other direction, the vinyl fence. This is along Dorland and Gregory. And it's this area on the northern property that is, uh, in staff's opinion, was not effectively screened per the regulations. And they've, uh, addressed that this is where the privet hedge will be. And then this, there's some additional landscaping, um, which is more robust than what they had originally proposed, but does leave this area somewhat unaddressed, which I understand is not under the scope of work for this specific phase, but it is all still a part of the, the same property.
Where's the, where are the pickleball courts?
I believe the pickleball courts are going to be, I'm sorry. They're, so they're swapping the parking in the pickleball court. So or the tenant, there's tennis and pickleball courts. I'm sure they can use them interchangeably.
Okay. So it's just, they're just going to put the vinyl over the chain link fencing on the, on the northern side of the pickleball courts, as I understand it, to deaden the sound of pickleball. So that's different than the chain link fencing you're talking about. Right?
Yes, I'm ta- I'm not talking about the acoustical barrier. I just mean the, uh, the regulation that waterfront clubs have to be effectively screened. So if in the commission's opinion that, uh, vegetation is effective screening from adjacent streets and properties, I can remove that condition or, um, leave it up to you. But that's just the one, one issue of compliance that I had noted.
So that has nothing to do with the vinyl over the, which is the sound edding, which is a different.
Yes, I just, just because they had an existing vinyl fence along other portions of the property, I suggested it as a way to, you know, keep, keep the look continuous.
Yep.
Thank you for that, Galen. Uh, I, I assumed, uh, it was the, uh, sound deadening fencing.
So what is the commission's feeling on the chain link fencing on the?
Can we go back to, uh?
What, would you like me to pull up? Sorry about that.
Yeah, would you pull up?
Resolution? Okay. Well, that makes sense then. Right? Does everybody agree?
I would suggest that that area is a marsh and a, a pond and sort of a swampy area to the north. It's not along the road. So, well, yes, it might, I don't know, maybe if it looks prettier, but I feel like it's, it's a whole different environment. And that's why they probably had the chain link there to begin with, because it's going to get wet more. It's just different. Uh, it's a different environment. So I, I'm not concerned whether they put the vinyl fencing there or not. I think if you put chain link and then you grow bushes around it, it actually looks more like a natural environment rather than a white vinyl fence. Uh, I, but I could go either way. I'm not going to make a big deal out of it.
Yeah, I, I think I feel similarly, um, in that the, the cedars that they've added, um, so from the first plans among we just saw, uh, covers the, the screen that was a, a gap from the, from the relocated court. Um, I, I could also go either way on this, but I, I don't mind the, the cedars that are proposed.
Yeah, I think a more natural look is actually more attractive than the white vinyl fence.
Well, I think given, given that, uh, sound deadening is not what we're looking at. Um, I feel the same way as, uh, Tammy and Chapin. Uh, whatever, whatever works to screen, uh, th- that area, whether it's vegetative or fencing, uh, would be acceptable to me.
And that would, uh, comply with section four point three point nine. CP one D of the regulations. Amelia?
I will leave that up to the commission to decide. I, I heard from my perspective, I don't know that a chain look fence would, I would not consider that screening. Um, but I mean, I can adjust the condition to just say that, uh, screening be provided along the northern property boundary. So they do have an option to make it more natural because I do agree. I think planting along the entirety of that boundary would look nice and be more natural along the marsh.
What about?
One thing to keep in mind is that the, I'm sorry, Tammy.
Oh, no, excuse me. What about vegetative screening? I mean, they, they're going to want the chain link fence for their protection because they don't want people entering their club. But if you have the chain link and then you put vegetation, you won't see the chain link after a while.
Yeah, I think that chain link is also needed to affix the soundproofing.
Mm hmm.
Can we see the screening, uh, as approved by, uh, the staff? Just so we, we have some check to see that that is all accomplished.
Amelia, Brian, do you feel like, uh?
Is it?
That's, uh, something you guys will be able to take on is that, that review to make sure it's sufficient?
Yes, I think so. That would be fine. The applicant's been very responsive and easy to work with. So I think that would be no problem.
Okay, great. Sorry, Darius. I keep cutting you off.
I know, uh, I'm, is it vegetative, vegetative or vegetative? I, I don't know.
I ask myself this question every time I write one of these.
I think it's I V E.
I mean, vegetative. Thank you.
Good point, Darius.
About vegetables.
I'm surprised I'll be new to it.
Asparagus nuts.
Okay. Can we move down in the? Okay. Does anybody have any other suggestions?
Well, Galen, I'm trying to find a place to put in about using permeable pavement. But I don't really see a line where it fits. So I don't know if we just add that. but I don't really see a line where it fits, so I don't know if we just add that, or, and maybe I'm the only one that feels that way.
Permeable pa-
Not permeable pavers, but permeable paving, there is a difference.
Did he already say that's already part of the plan?
I don't think they did, no.
They spoke briefly about having permeable pavers for one of the sidewalks or some of the sidewalks around the courts, but not permeable paving for the, for the lots, that's my understanding.
As part of this phase, but another phase that it could be a part of it.
Yeah, but if they're digging up the tennis court and putting down a new surface, that now is the opportunity, they wouldn't dig up what they put down, you know, in a year or two or three or five, whenever they.
That's right, only government does that.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Lou.
Just how I felt about the parking lot, you know, with the, you know, with the solar panels, you know, they're putting in the parking lot, then the parking lot is already in and nobody wants to go back and change what's already there. It's exactly the same idea. So maybe we should put that in this approval. Not the solar panels, but the permanent.
Permeable paving. Permeable paving.
Yes.
Okay, well, if somebody thinks that, if you guys want to put it in, great, if not, I'll stand down.
Well, where would you want it again?
Well, I don't, I think you just have to add a line. It, it, there's no other comment in the resolution that speaks to the material that they're using.
Is permeable paving something that you can use if you have a cold tech system in one area that you're expecting all the water to go into?
Yes, I know that we did it in the Ambler lot at the taxing district because there were wetlands close by. We had to do all kinds of stuff. And they're right there on the sound.
Can you do it in tennis courts?
No.
I don't know if you could make a permeable pave or tennis court, I have no.
Because then, you know, we'd have to exclude the tennis court.
No, it looks like, it looks like regular pavement and you only notice that it's permeable when it's pouring rain and the regular pavement, the water is pooling and running wherever. And on the permeable paving, the water is absorbed into the pavement.
Yeah, I think we all agree on that. I'm just, I think the question is where or to, or to what extent?
In the new parking area, not the tennis court or not the pickleball court, tennis pickle.
Well, Tammy, do you want to make it a requirement or something that they should consider?
I definitely would like them to consider it.
Well, then let's put that language in.
Great, thank you, Lou. So do I, yeah, anywhere is great.
Usability of installing as much permeable or
paving.
paving as possible, I don't know.
Right, in the new parking area between the nice landscaped, whatever the term is, landscaped area.
That's fine.
Thank you, Lou.
Okay. Any further suggestions for change or are we ready to take a vote?
I'm ready.
Before we take it, I'll say that since I moved, I'm good with the, the changes as well and happy to like reaffirm the changes. I don't know who seconded, but.
Okay. I don't remember who seconded either.
I think I may have seconded. In, in the event that I seconded.
You're agreeing too.
The changes are acceptable.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Well, then let's do it.
If anyone opposed to the amended resolution.
Yeah. Let's, Amelia, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes, I can. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Commissioner Schulman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rowena? Commissioner Bryce?
Yes.
Commissioner Langallis?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Walls?
Yes.
And as Commissioner Lenkowski has recused herself, I'll have that be reflected in the record too. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, now we have two more public hearings of the of the schedule, and it's bound twenty minutes to nine. Does everybody want to take a five minute break?
Yes.
How do you feel about that? Okay, let's take a five minute break. My clock, the clock on my wall is low.
Do you want to do eight minutes and just come back at eight fifty?
That's a good solution, absolutely. We'll come back at eight fifty. Okay, good, see you all at eight fifty. And we will move on to our next public hearing. I have to get my glasses here. The next public hearing is twenty twenty five dash forty six SP Cam Lejoy Auto Wrecking Company, Inc., forty Meadow Street. It's redevelopment of a recycling facility. And who is representing Lejoy?
I am.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we'll try to be brief.
Good, thank you.
Well, thank you again, Madam Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, I'm Liz Suchi of Carmody Torrent Sandec in Hennessy, ten fifty five Washington Boulevard, and I represent Lejoy's Auto Wrecking Company, Inc., owner of the, at forty Meadow Street. Present tonight are Jim Murphy and Brendan Keane of Lejoy's, Bill Andriopoulos, Principal of Andriopoulos Design Associates, the project architect, Maria Genovese of Andriopoulos Design Associates, the project manager, Andy Sumalides, civil engineer with Land Tech, who's project civil engineer, and Steve Sapola, our traffic engineer with Hardisty and Hanover. By way of background, applications for both special permit and coastal site plan for the redevelopment of this site as a recycling facility were filed on June fourth. Neighbors within a hundred feet were notified of the submission by certificate of mailing on June eleventh, and the certificate was returned to staff and should be in the file. Neighbors were notified of the public hearing of tonight's date on July second, and the green cards and any returned certified letters were delivered to staff today. And a sign was posted on the property more than two weeks ago and has remained in place through tonight's public hearing. To date, I have not received any calls from neighbors or others in opposition to this application, but several neighbors, including the Norwalk Housing Authority, which owns forty five Meadow Street across the street, which you know is being redeveloped with new housing authority residences, has sent letter of support along with others in the neighborhood. The property is located at forty Meadow Street. It is District Two, Block ninety one, Lot fifty one. The property is about three and a half acres in size. It is within the S D L I zone and had formerly been industrial number one. And then, and then two thousand twenty two regulation change, it was changed to industrial number two. It is within the boundary of the coastal area management zone. And in this location, the minimum flood elevation is eleven feet as established by FEMA. And with the Norwalk two foot additional height requirement, any structures need to be at or about thirteen feet, the very least. Currently, and you'll see, as you see on the, the survey in front of you, there is a one story, fifty eight hundred square foot commercial industrial building that was built around nineteen forty five. And there are bays for recycled products. There is also an auto crusher that exists on the site. Nearly in the entirety of the property is impervious, and part of this application has attempted to reduce that impervious surfacing by as much as we could. There is also existing nonconforming parking right off Meadow Street in front of the existing building. And this plan incorporates that nonconforming parking. However, you have a text amendment, and I believe a public hearing right after this with respect to language that would address that parking situation and make this parking field that we proposed conforming. I'd like to just give you a very brief history of Lejoy's for those who may not know and others who may be listening. Lejoy's has been in existence in Norwalk for more than a hundred years, and the neighborhood has developed around it. Initially, the business was rags and paper recycling started by Francois Lejoy in the early nineteen hundreds. Then, when the recycling of auto parts and scrap metal became very profitable, Lejoy's moved into that industry as well. And many, many years ago, the rear, the rights, on the right side of the, the screen in front of you, there were many, many, many autos stored here as part of the auto parts and scrap metal recycling component. In its century of existence, Lejoy's has served city and state residents, local, federal and state governments, many municipalities in Fairfield County, local police and fire departments. Multiple generations of the Lejoy family have, have worked at this site and own this property. They live in Norwalk, have raised their families here and employ many local residents. You'll hear tonight a little bit from Jim Murphy, one of the Lejoy family members, who will describe to you what the processing and recycling process is all about. So now, this, this business has evolved with the changing times to a recycling facility that accepts, sorts, processes, and then packages for resale, all types of scrap metal. And that's consistent with its State Department of Motor Vehicles recycling permit. It also takes in and crushes autos. Metals such as steel, cast iron, copper wire and tubing, sheeting, aluminum siding, rims, windows, brass, bronze, and all other sorts of metals are recycled at this site. Some of its customers include Pennex, to whom it sells aluminum scrap, and Alcoa and Novellus, copper, to whom it sells to Revere Copper and Accu Powder and several others. There's also steel metal scraps such as girders from the former Maritime Aquarium that was, that is sold to Commercial Metals, McWayne and others. As a matter of fact, guardrails and signs and light poles from I ninety five in the Merritt Parkway have also been recycled here. Through collaborative efforts with the staff, particularly Mr. Kleppen and members of his staff in this commission, the new zoning regulations adopted and effective in twenty twenty four now include a recycling definition and use in the S D L I zone, which is exactly what Lejoy's has become over time. It's no longer simply auto salvage and wrecking as it was in its original days. As a result, Lejoy's is now poised to move forward and redevelop the property with a new zoning and FEMA compliant building that will allow it to continue in Norwalk, prosper and be sustained, and also hopefully be the beginning of additional new development and upgrades to other industrial properties along this corridor. So the proposal before you are twofold. There's a special permit application and a, since a recycling facility is allowed in the S D L I zone by special permit and a coastal site plan application, since the property, as I said before, is within the boundary of the coastal area management zone. We propose the construction, use and occupancy of a thirty six thousand square foot two story building. Finished first floor would be at thirteen point one feet, so it complies with FEMA and the local zoning regulations as to minimum flood. Generally, the first floor would be materials, product and receiving, processing, shipping, business maintenance operations, garage, office, some welding. There will also be a showcase display area for some of the Lejoy family racing collectives and memorabilia that customers who come in to bring their, their metal or to purchase could actually see as they walk into the main building. A metal building along the southern boundary will be demolished. Some asphalt at the rear will be removed and the increase, the existing impervious, nonconforming space, we hope to reduce by about five percent. Standards of reviews for special permit and coastal site plan were defined and identified in our application. So we'd ask that you just take judicial notice of those and we'll go into them into specific detail. But the application was also accompanied by the survey, the site plan, civil engineering plans, architectural plans, a coastal, a coastal resource analysis, stormwater management, and also a traffic report. C X sign offs have been received, I believe, by almost all agencies, including DPW, W P C A, Fire, SNU. And I believe we had additional responses received today by T M P, none of which are extraordinary or unduly burdensome, and I'm, I'm confident we'll be able to incorporate those as they had requested. I'd like now, if possible, for Andy Sumalides of Land Tech to share with you his site plan, to walk you through the site plan, stormwater management. He'll be followed by Mr. Andriopoulos to describe to you the building, the design. I think you'll be very pleasantly, pleasantly surprised to see what the current and what the proposed will look like. And lastly, Steve Sapola of Hardisty and Hanover is here, a few many questions about his traffic analysis. But since this is not a new proposed entity, just a larger building to modernize and upgrade the existing business, we don't anticipate increases in traffic, nor do we anticipate increase in the amount of business that would be occurring on site. So at this time, I'd like Mr. Sumalides to come on. If you have any questions of me or any of our development team, we'd be happy to answer them.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Andy Sumalides, Principal and professional engineer with Land Tech. What I'm sharing now is an aerial of the site. This is Meadow Street out here, and highlighted in blue here is the, is the site that we're discussing tonight, forty Meadow Street. As you can see, it's surrounded by commercial properties, northeast and south. What we're going to be focusing on is basically this main corridor here, a lot of the, the rear portion of site is to remain as is. There are some removal of structures and removal of asphalt, but predominantly it's reorganizing and putting all of what you see in this block basically in a building and operating within a building. So just to quickly highlight again on the existing conditions, I'll really just touch upon the drainage right now. You could see there's various catch basins scattered throughout the site, all connected via piping and going right into the town's drainage system. No treatment, basically going in there untreated, right? So no water quality measures are being had currently on the site. Here's our site layout plan. So you could see here, a, a new building will encompass the northern portion of this property. In the front here, and you'll see more of this through the architecture, is a two story administrative and offices. Here you have your receiving, processing, shipping area, and then some garage bays here in the back. The parking here, again, reorganized, introducing a lot more landscaping along the frontage here. New sidewalks, new street trees along the frontage, new curbing along the frontage, new fencing along the frontage. So a lot of improvements, both from a safety and aesthetic perspective along the frontage of, of this property. Just to fast forward here to the drainage infrastructure, we're maintaining a good portion again of the drainage again in the rear. You could see some new piping collecting all the roof runoff from the new building, all the paved areas along the frontage and putting it through what's called a hydrodynamic separator. Hydrodynamic separator is essentially a manhole chamber that has this swirl chamber that removes sediment, removes oils, hydrocarbons and the such, and then discharges clean water essentially out into, back into the town's or the city's drainage system. So essentially taking the entire site, even though we're not touching again a lot of the rear, but we are going to treat every inch of impervious surface on this site. Currently, it's essentially a hundred percent paved with buildings and asphalt. What we are introducing is just shy of ten thousand square feet of pervious surfaces by way of landscaped areas and introduce that pervious parking in the rear here. We made spaces here that are pervious. So that essentially, again, meets the water quality requirements for the city of Norwalk. And happy to answer any questions before I hand it over to KDA Architects. Just one thing to touch on. There is also a landscaping plan. So you could see in the front here, I'll concentrate again in the front. These were the street trees, new sidewalk along the frontage, new trees, shrubs, and landscaping introduced in this front core area here around the parking area. We also have a couple of trees scattered throughout where we have parking to meet the town's requirements again for, for landscaped islands, adjacent parking stalls. So you'll see a couple of trees also scattered throughout the site. And again, happy to answer any questions. Hearing none? Turn it over to Bill and Maria.
Oh, where is the street parking that's being proposed?
Where is the street parking that's being proposed?
There is no street parking. It's parking on site.
Correct.
It's all within the site.
Let me let me share again and I'll show you.
I thought you were waiting for approval of some parking on the street?
No, no. Some spaces in the front. There are some spaces along the, I guess it's the western property line.
There's some spaces along here, some spaces along the rear of the building. But this is the, I think, what Attorney Sutcliffe alluded to in terms of the text amendment of parking in the front.
Yes, I think that's what you're referring to. I see. Right. I see. Thank you.
And it's currently all asphalt and parking currently.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Andreopoulos?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Bill Andreopoulos. I'm the principal architect with Andreopoulos Design Associates LLC. Our offices are located at sixteen River Street here in Norwalk. Also with me here this evening is Ms. Maria Genovese, Senior Project Manager with ADA. Okay, so you've all had a glimpse of the plan in your packet. You have copies of our plans. Outlining the proposed new two-story structure with attached high bay recycling center. The new structure will assist in bringing a clean look to the site and allow the owners to project how this recycling facility business has evolved. So if we're looking at the first floor plan. Centered on the building is the main customer visitor, front entry stair and accessible ramp to the enter the main office lobby. Where customers and visitors will find the reception area, elevators and stairs up to the second floor. On this level, labeled administrative area, opposite the existing exterior truck scale is the new state-of-the-art scale room. These two integral features led to the program for the location of the new building. Also on this level is a training room for for staff training and programs. Stairwells providing circulation to and from the second floor. There's an employee break room, locker rooms, men's and women's toilet rooms and a shower area. And the museum space, this is not a traditional museum. That would be open to the public, but rather an area to display Mr. Don Lejoy's racing memorabilia. And full-size model race car that can be viewed through the large roll-up window at the front of the building. At the scale room is a vestibule for customers to have access from the receiving area, drop-off area, up the stairs to the cashier window. Behind the administration portion of the building, located in the high bay portion of the pre-manufactured building. Is the receiving area for drop-off of small and large bulk products to be recycled. Once the materials are received and sorted by the employees, will move the material to. The processing area where specialized equipment will break down the materials further. Once the processed materials are packaged, they are then moved to the shipping area. Where the materials will be loaded and delivered to buyers purchasing the raw materials for reuse. The last two spaces on this lower level beyond the shipping area are the welding and garage areas. Used primarily for equipment maintenance. That's the program on the first floor completely. On the second floor. There is a lobby area with access to the elevator stairwells and bathrooms. There's also a conference room with a viewing window into overlooking the receiving area below. And then there is an open plan office area with closets and general storage, utility and equipment. And that basically is the program for that second floor of the administration building. Is there any questions? I'll field questions from the Commissioners.
Question on the garage space, is that going to be used for automotive repair or any of those types of activities?
No, basically for equipment and repair.
Okay.
Equipment that's used in recycling the materials.
Okay.
Or moving the materials. They have forklifts that they use. That run around between receiving and and processing and shipping. To move the materials around. We're talking heavy, heavy materials, so they do have forklifts and other, you know. Equipment for their for that part of their business. And they can talk better to what else is done in that garage area. But I do know that they do, you know, can park a car in there. It's big enough for cars.
Going to, yeah, it's gonna have four parking.
Oh, is there four in there? Yeah, okay, so there's four.
There's four.
Okay, so is that part of our parking? Okay, so there's four there for our parking calculation. So if if any other questions, we could talk about the exterior for a minute.
I am, I have a question.
Okay.
Yes, so what are your mitigation practices to keep your neighbors and the surrounding. Houses and businesses safe from toxic fumes that may be coming from your factory?
For my, to my knowledge, there are no toxic fumes coming from our our site. But you can talk, the owners could talk more to that subject.
But did you say the recycling center where you're compressing plastics?
Uh, no.
No, it's metals.
All metals, yeah, all metals.
And so is there any debris, you know, filtering in the air?
No, I mean, it's all done inside now. The stripper is is a machine that strips the wires down. They put people bringing this bolt wire from job sites and it's just strips the wires down. That's something you can't do by hand. So there is no real. Dust or, I mean, there's dust and everything, but I mean, there's there's no debris that that it becomes airborne. There's no VOCs. We're not dealing with paints or those types of color and coatings.
Smells and odors.
Pardon me?
What about smells and odors?
No, no. You could talk to the owners, but I don't think there's any owners.
Yeah, I think we should let.
I mean, I've been in there when they're working.
Commissioner Jordan Byron, would would you just indulge us just a couple more minutes? We just wanted to show you the. The exterior and then Mr. Murphy is available and I'm sure he he's best able to explain you, first of all, what the process is. And what kind of safety measures are employed and I think he'll answer all of your questions. Could just give us a minute? Would that be okay? Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, well, again, so that's a question for Mr. Murphy. If there's any questions about the building, I mean, we'll go to. This image that we're showing you here is now is is an existing or a recent picture taken showing. The front of the building now. And from the front of the property now, as you can see that in the. Well, the new, so I I can tell you when we show our elevations, if you could pull up our specifications.
Just quickly flip back.
Yeah, okay, so this is this is a drawing of of the new building. So the new facility is a combination of two. Two buildings both erected on the site. Together, they form a hybrid combination of site-built conventional constructions. For the administration, the two-story administration building and pre-manufactured high bay. At the behind that, at the rear for the recycling facility. Again, the administration area and processing areas will have floor levels elevated above the base flood. Plus two to a datum of thirteen point one. And the receiving, shipping and garage and welding areas will be at grade with the required flood vents. To meet the FEMA regulations, so.
And then I'm gonna quickly share the new rendering with you so that you can see.
We have a rendering, a three-dimensional.
Yeah. Get that real quick. There we go.
Okay, so this is a two two-dimensional image of the front.
We don't see it yet.
Hang on.
And, oh, you're not seeing it?
One quick second. Yeah, it was giving me trouble loading.
Okay, yeah, there's, that's the two-dimensional image. That shows some of the glazing. A question from staff was, is the glazing going to be, you know, clear glass? And the answer to that question is yes. So there'll be full full vision into the building and and light coming into the building, which is good for the staff and all that. And this is a three-dimensional image of what the front of the building could look like. Once this operation all moves indoors. And and that's what it's gonna happen. And so we got images here showing the fencing that we're proposing. Which is a an iron picket style fence. And the landscaping that we propose at the driveway and entry to the building. So the and then again, on this rendering, the exterior materials of the administration portion. Will be of a metal panel system that will have simulated wood horizontal accent band. And vertical rectangular metal panels with a smooth kindar coated finish exterior paint color. All glazing, all glazing is ministry is clear. I mentioned that already and. We have samples, physical samples of both the wood and the accent material and. And for the high bay recycling material to staff. So we can show it to you tonight as well, if you like. We have some very small samples. That we could hold up if anyone cares to see the samples for the wood and the panels.
And but Amelia has a hard copy. It doesn't photograph now. But what I can show you is, if you can see it. This is the simulated wood. It's very light. It's aluminum, but it's a great material and it's sustainable, fully sustainable material. It's aluminum. And what happens is it's maintenance-free. It's got. A fire rating quality for it and because it's aluminum, it's a hundred percent recyclable. At the end of its life cycle. So this is the simulated wood that would be on the front of the building. And this. The color of the building, the high bay portion in the back, we specifically picked a blue because. We believed it would blend in better with the. The sky in the background and you would, it would be less noticeable. In the background.
So we go from this, so Maria, one more time, we go from this is the existing conditions. And if you would show the three D.
Sure, give me just. Yeah, and then you can see the blue back here just kind of blends in with the blue sky. We just kind of want it to.
We're still seeing the existing.
Oh, my, my apologies. Let me switch that back one. This portion back here. Against the blue sky and this is the the same view of the existing picture that we had. So this is the actual color of the sky the day that we we took this picture, which was a couple of weeks ago. And it just kind of blends in with the background, so you don't even really recognize it so much. And that was the object of the game with some of these materials.
So it would be a great transformation.
That's what we think.
And I'm wondering about your storage and warehousing. Where are you putting your raw materials for that everything that's going to be. You know, going through this recycling process?
It's actually it's all inside.
It's all inside. I'm gonna flip back to the plan.
Nothing can be seen from the street?
Not anymore.
That has been the challenge that we have we have been given by our client and by Mr. Kleppen and his staff. To come up with a design that hides about as much as we possibly can of this operation from the street.
Terrific. And I'd.
So everything, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Speaks, I would like to ask him about noise.
Sure.
Sure. While while we're on this image, I just want to add. What's not on this render, because we added after the fact, was some landscaping along, so right behind that fence. And I could share that plan again. If you want to see, there's a bunch of landscaping along that whole frontage.
Right here.
Yeah.
I see it.
Yep.
So perhaps at this point and in an in answer to Commissioner Jordan Byron's question, Mr. Murphy, could you come on and. Answer some of the questions and give, you're on mute, give a little bit of some information about it, how a typical. Metal is processed and what what comes in and what comes out.
All right, thank you for the commission, the commissioner. For listening to what our great plan is for the future of our business. We've come a long way and hopefully with your help, we're gonna set the stage to. Not only help the city, the state and all the agencies and businesses that we do help. But it will bring us up to date with standard. What would it be designs and equipment technology of today? So just to briefly describe for those of who don't know what we do. We we're sustainable recycling. We accept any and all metals. If you can picture anything from the periodic table. We accept them from everything from government contractors down to the general public cleaning out their garages. On a, you know, on a warm spring day after a winter. We also deal with many municipalities who also accept these materials. They get separated at sites. We supply pickup service and we collect those materials. Once we get them, we separate. Process, sort and package to go back to the mills. So that they can melt and make new products without having to dig it up naturally from the earth. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Can you address the question of noise and dust? And things, do you take in things like plastic or other other materials that might be problematic?
We do not accept plastic. That is something that down the road we've possibly looked at if we have the warehouse space. To possibly do. I don't know about the problematic side of it, other than, you know, we would have to learn and see what we would need to do. In order to do so. What was your other question, Liz? I'm sorry.
Noise and dust.
Okay, so we have a copper chopper which is infused, separates all the plastic from the copper wire. It's a filtration process that captures and and filters all of the dust. As far as noise, there is a noise ordinance in the city and we've never had a problem. I know going back twenty-five years ago or so. In the first years of the shredder, we had testing done and we've never had a problem.
And since much of the new, the buildings that are proposed, a lot of the activity would be taking place indoors. Similar to what happens now, but almost all of it would be indoors after the building is constructed.
Correct, and that's part of what we talked about with Mr. Kleppen, that it would make us much more conforming. Whereas a lot of the things that are now handled outside would now be handled inside. It would encapsulate, which would help everybody.
How many employees do you plan to have?
We don't see having any more employees with. In the last fifteen, twenty years, we've seen it go from as low as eighteen to twenty to as high as thirty-five, forty. We're currently sitting at thirty. Other than ebbs and flows of normal business, you know, the way things are and environments. We don't see having any extra employees.
So, I'm sorry, excuse me. Are many of your employees Norwalk residents?
Yes.
Okay, that was my next question.
Sorry, excuse me. Sorry.
But that's fine, that's fine. That's what I wanted to know. Are you recruiting from your local area?
Oh, absolutely.
Right, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions with Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, one quick question. So I'm glad to hear that more of the operation is moving indoors for all the reasons mentioned. What's planned for the the space that was previously used outdoors, maybe near the the rear of the lot? Like, what's the the new use for that space?
There wouldn't be a new use. It would be basically the same as it is. And it would be tougher for us. We'd have to be work a lot more lean and organized because we would have less space. Basically for storage. If you're more than welcome to come and visit. Anyone who has any questions or when you come and see it. Um, anyone who has any questions or uh, when you come and see it, I know. Uh, there's several, I know Liz and others have come to visit and see what we do, um, and. It, it really helps to see it, so that you would understand it. Um, but it's not gonna really change anything in the rear, other than to take uh, a lot of the different things that we do. Throughout the process and encapsulate a lot of them to make it so that they'll be inside.
Thank you.
Uh, question, Mr. Murphy, um, thanks for your uh, presentation and. You own the property next door, is that correct, at number forty-six?
Uh, the properties are co-owned uh, by four different companies, um, so. When you say that we own it, I'll say, okay, well, it's co-owned, so we don't control anything with forty-six. Um, that is my father-in-law's brother and his family and they separated, I believe in nineteen ninety-seven.
Oh, okay, so if, if a cons, if a um. Not a business, you know, somebody that's bringing in girders from the train station, if a normal homeowner type, you know, doing their spring cleaning. Drops off metal at La Joy's, does this change where? That the individual goes versus where a company with big, bringing in much larger uh, metals would go?
Yes and no, so it really all depends on what you bring, because you never know what's coming in next or who's bringing it. So it all depends on if you go to your periodic table, whether as Liz uh, went through the chart before, whether it's cast iron. Steel, aluminum, copper, brass, and then what size is it? So what do we need to do to process it in order to package it to get it to the proper mill? Would determine where it goes, so there would be times where uh, uh, somebody coming in. From say, taking out their boiler in their basement. Would go to the same place that a big truck would go to with a load, say, coming from Sikorsky uh, aircraft. Uh, but we, we have it set up where everyone takes their time, it's all done in sequence. And in safety and they're in and out in that way, but they could go to the same place.
Okay, so there's, there's no conflict of, you know, big, big delivery versus little guy delivery getting.
Absolutely not, it's just a matter of how we handle it and what resources we need to do in order to do it properly.
Okay, great, well, I'm hoping that when you um, re-landscape and redo your building, that maybe your neighbor will take heed. And I'm also wondering, your sign is rather iconic, um, that are you keeping it or are you going to do a new sign?
Well, you know, that's something that hasn't come up yet, so we did have a little bit of discussion, uh, Liz, you wanna jump in here?
Uh, if you can keep the sign, I would suggest you keep the sign, but that, we, we haven't even thought, really thought about how to sign the property. But we can always, we'll talk to staff and work with staff on what works and what works for the La Joy's, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Kane.
Thank you.
I think the armadillo or the rhinoceros also, that's on a top of the. The roof at the entrance is, is going to somehow be incorporated inside the building, if you haven't driven by. It's worth driving by to take a look at the, the metal, I call it an armadillo and I've been corrected, it's a rhinoceros.
Well, they're all made out of chrome, chrome bumper ends, uh, for those who remember them, back in the day, everything's plastic now, but. Uh, the corners of all the chrome cars, the old ones, they were all little, they bend shell shaped. And somebody, an artist made a rhinoc- a rhinoceros out of all these chrome bumper ends, it's, it's quite impressive.
So will you have an education component? Um, to show prospective employees, meaning students. On what you do and how it ties into the sustainability of their community?
That is an excellent question, and I'm going to leave Mr. Murphy to answer it, that's an excellent question.
That is our plan, um, and spearheaded uh, by Brendan. And we've discussed it uh, a lot, and especially now with the new school coming down the street. We have conducted in the past, uh, very controlled tours uh, with Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts. Uh, certain uh, groups of small uh, individuals, but what we want to incorporate is something. Uh, possibly a corridor that would go down the length of the whole receiving area and. This, uh, processing area, where we would be able to take. Say, a, a fourth grade class, a science class, um, studying the periodic table. And show them these things for real and what we do with that, because most people, we don't, okay, your dryer breaks, what happens? You call like Toros or somebody and you get a new one, well, you don't ever think about what happens to your old one. And we could show you what happens to your old one. And that opens eyes for a lot of people.
Yes, thank you.
We've actually had this very discussion with Councilwoman um, Darlene Young. And she was the one that in, in talking to Mr. Murphy had suggested perhaps there'd be some sort of collaboration or. Class or field trip for the new students of the new school over to La Joy's once this is ready, we thought that's a great idea.
Indeed.
Anyone has any other questions for either Mr. Andriopoulos, Ms. Genovese, Mr. Sumalidis or Mr. Murphy? And Mr. Sapola is available in case you have traffic questions, but as I indicated before, this is not a new facility, it's not an expansion of an existing. But if you have questions of him or would like him to briefly explain his analysis, he's here and available.
Liz, can I say one thing if I may? Just going back to the beginning of the presentation from Land Tech. So our water was designed in our drainage system, basically a fish hook as it was described and shown. Does not go directly into the city drainage, we have two one thousand gallon oil water separators. Before it ever goes through and we have those uh, tested quarterly. And every year, usually September, October, we have them completely drained and tested and seen. So that's before it hits the city drain.
Thank you.
Okay.
So whatever the commission's pleasure is at this time, um, and if you are satisfied with what you've heard, don't need any further information. We look forward to comments from the public.
Does anybody have any more questions? Actually, we'll move to comments from the public. Uh, again, uh, everybody. Gets to speak one time only, uh, but you, they can speak as long as you feel is necessary to make you breathe. Um. Give us your name and address before you start to speak. And Brian, can you bring people over?
Sure, so if you'd like to speak on this application, please use the raise your hand tool, it's located at the bottom of your screen and you'd click that once. And if you're dialing on a phone, you'd hit star nine, and then just a reminder to give us your name and address uh, when you first start speaking, and with that, we'll bring over Lori Mira.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, my name is Lori Mira, I live at twenty-five Split Rock Road. In Village Creek, so just on the other side of the estuary. Um, I'm also on the Norwalk River Watershed Association. Um, I'm. I, I realize that there is um, going to be a uh, micro forest right across the street. That is um. Uh, being planted in, be, in collaboration with the city of Norwalk. And the Norwalk River Watershed Association. And I'm just looking at the plans for in front, you know, the landscaping, it seems very um, minimal. Um, it, it is a, a, a flood zone, right, that area floods easily, it's a, a low area, uh, um. And I'm just wondering if, if you would be willing. Um, if Land Tech or, or Mr. Murphy and company, whatever, would be willing to uh, work with the city. And work with the Norwalk River Watershed Association to really um. Landscape with native plants, trees, shrubs. Um, that area along the street and in front of.
Yes.
The building and also, there's a lot of impermeable uh, surface area. Throughout the site and to find ways in which, you know, we could add more trees. Um, you, you have mentioned random, you know, maybe a few here and there, but. Um, there's so much impermeable surface, we have very few, we have a very low coverage in South Norwalk, we're trying to, as you probably know. Plant more trees, they help to, you know, filter the floodwater, the runoff, you know, the, it helps with the noise. Pollution and all that, so I'd just like to know if you're open to, you know, um. Uh, maybe some better or, or, or exploring different kind of landscaping.
Got you, all right Lori, thank you for your concern.
It's right beyond the, you, you can wait till the end, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Comments and then we'll have you.
I thought, I thought she was asking me a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure who to direct this to.
Yeah, so Lori, just, if you wanna go through, if you have any more comments, um, what. You'll, the, we'll have the public do is everyone will speak and then the applicant will reply to all of those at the end.
Okay, there is one other comment about the water quality. I'm just, uh, right now, it sounds like there, the filtration system isn't very good, it sounds like. I wanna know how you're gonna upgrade it and it doesn't go directly into the sewer system, but it's. In a holding facility, I don't, I'm really, I'm not really sure about that and I'm wondering. If any of this gets into the estuary uh, in the back. Um, or if there's any runoff from this, um, okay, that's about it.
All right. Uh, next we have Mark Fischel.
Good evening, my name is Mark Fischel, I'm at one twenty-nine Woodward Avenue, the Sports House. And we are located immediately behind Jim's operation. And I just wanna say that Jim is nothing, has never been anything but a terrific neighbor, no noise issues, no smell issues, nothing whatsoever. I think it's awesome that he's improving the project, the whole area, the project is gonna considerably upgrade the area and I'm fully in favor of it.
Thank you, Mark, uh, next we have Diane Lorcella.
Good evening, for the record, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners and applicants. For the record, my name is Diane Lorcella, twenty-one Little Fox Lane in Norwalk. Uh, tonight I am here because I had some neighbors that I worked with when city carding was being purchased by. Uh, uh, eventually when waste, uh, there have been up the street. Um, these neighbors live on Lincoln Avenue, which is, I think, Lincoln Street across, around the corner. Uh, along the property line of uh, the houses back up to the property line of uh, La Joy's. First I wanted to say, um, the La Joy name, uh, I didn't realize it was a hundred years. It is an amazing family. Uh, I'm Italian, so I think, I don't remember their French, Canadian or, or what their background is, but. Um, coming over from other countries, finding a way to make a living. And then evolving into a uh, important scrap metal dealership. Is an amazing story and I read in the, in the newspaper that a, a, a small. Um, museum was going to be built in this new proposal and I'm very much in favor of that. I also wanted to say that I think that uh. Uh, improvement of the water quality, the polluted runoff, nowhere to go but up there because uh, of the, the age of this site. Um, it, it uh, drains into Village Creek area. I'm a former tenant, a re- resident of both Village Creek and Harborview. And so I very much am interested in improvement of the water quality coming off of our industrial areas. I happen to be an environmental consultant that works in waste management. But also environmental justice, both, both of these things professionally. So I'm going to first speak to the waste management side of the aisle. And then the environmental good neighbor side of the aisle. As I said, there are a lot of improvements here, I'm very pleased with the changing of the facade. Uh, right now, uh, at least as of a month ago or so, um. People that lived right across the street in Meadow Gardens and the neighborhood would be greeted by empty, we hope, empty uh, drums. A wall of them and some green screening that you really could see through it. So I'm very pleased at the um, what was being presented by Mr. Andriopoulos, I think his name is, and um. Uh, the, as the architects. Um, I also think that it is very important for job uh, training and also uh, STEM. That what they do in uh, finding the value in other people's trash. Is something that in our country we need to do more of, because we're in a waste crisis in Connecticut and beyond. Um, so going back to the waste part, I just have some questions and I look forward to the answers later. Um, in the, usually in the process of uh, uh, metal recycling. As um, Mr. Murphy said and others, uh, you, you take in material from all different sources. Cars, um, someone's backyard uh, or garage, uh, businesses. So inevitably, there will be residue from different materials used to either coat that metal. Or just have contaminated that metal. And I don't think I've heard any review of what happens to any chemical strippers, solvents. Um, you know, I would imagine you have that and I, I would hope that you handle it, of course, according to proper hazardous waste laws. As a former hazardous waste investigator with the DEP back in the eighties, there are certain laws. That this industry has to abide by. Um, to that point and because of the nature of your work. And the fact that there had been problems in the past of the car crushers, there had been explosions. There had been leakages of gasoline, not every um, gas tank is perfectly clean before it's crushed. Um, I wanted to know, has there been an extensive grid sampling of soil? In the, in any of the areas uh, of this property? I do think because of the sensitive nature of the location and the fact that the. Both the water quality and soil uh, laws have changed a lot for, from uh, you know, back in the sixties when the environmental laws first started. That um, now they've improved as far as coastal area management, we have seen the connection with polluted runoff. And heat from impervious surfaces running off directly into very um, sensitive. Uh, biodiversity in our estuaries, I wanted to know, has there been any kind of. Um, environmental phase one, phase two or phase three on this property? I brought this up when another proposal had been done a little while ago, uh, of your neighbor. Um, they also have issues, but we're here today for La Joy's. Has there been soil contamination uh, studies? If not, why not, and I believe it would be fair for this commission, since this is a special permit. And there are things that speak to whether this site. Not just, not just what is proposed in the building, there's going to be a lot of changes made, good changes for this property. So I think it behooves this commission to ask about the soil quality and the polluted runoff. Um, going to the issues of, um, so my question also is, what do you do with the residues? As you are trying to recover the different kinds of metal, again, I'm in favor of metal recycling. Very important in our, in our world, very important. But there, it's not pristine, of course, what do you do with the contamination, the residues? And, and if so, about how many uh, gallons per, per month or per year do you produce of solvents or? Or um, either toxic material or hazardous waste? These are all fair things for this commission to ask, because of the sensitive nature, you're right against Village Creek there. And up the street, there are some natural shellfish beds, believe it or not, but that is true. As far as we go with environmental justice, um, and air quality and noise. I told you that I did some work, some research work several years ago. Relating to environmental justice and permits that were being reviewed or renewed. So, so some of those neighbors still I'm in touch with. And um, I ask that this commission not approve this application unless and until it can be shown. That there is adequate screening, not only in the front, which looks much better, but also. In the entire periphery, because right now, if you do a walkabout. I have always wondered why this company and some other companies in this part of South Norwalk have been allowed. To uh, pile. to, uh, pile their scrap materials so high above their fences so that they're viewed by people, um, who live up against the screen, up against your, your fence that you share. So could you do some good neighbor work, not only in the front, which is terrific for the new Meadow Street plan, which I'm aware of, and I'm going to be helping with that Maiwaki, micro forest, but also all the neighbors that live along around the corner, which I think is Lincoln Street, but I'm very tired. I'm sure you all are. I would like to see if this company, which is now doing a lot of good things, is willing to, to make up for some bad, bad neighborly actions in the past of, and, and I asked the commissioners to take a walk on that street. It is, um, really, uh, sad at the way those neighbors have been treated. The city has allowed it, the health department has allowed it. And quite frankly, the Le Joy family has allowed it. I'm glad they're making good now and I give them credit for that. But that doesn't mean that the neighbors on Lincoln Street, if that is the name of the street, have to keep enduring the high piles of metal of, uh, I don't know if the crusher is even working anymore, um, because of your up, upgrade of the plant. But there are, your materials piled way higher than they should be and they're in view of people that have children. Lastly, I know that, um, um, Nisachi is very diligent about sending out neighbor, uh, requests. Were they also sent out in Spanish? Uh, there are a lot of Spanish speakers throughout this neighborhood. Um, again, I do not know if it is something that this commission demands of its applicants. And if it's, and it's not, I think you, moving forward, you should make sure that you have, you ask the applicants to send out their, the cards in both English and Spanish. It may be a state law, so it may have nothing to do with it, but I believe that is why nobody said anything. In fact, it's a high, a lot of tenants there. The owners live out of, out of town. And again, this is not the applicant's fault necessarily. But I do think the staff should be sensitive to the neighborhood that this site abuts. With that, I look forward to some positive, additional positive steps in the side, the back of the Le Joy's property so that you truly can be a good neighbor to everybody in the neighborhood, not just your new, updated Meadow Gardens and the South Norwalk children. Uh, and I'm glad that, um, this has been discussed, but you have to pay attention to your neighbors behind you, to the side of you, and I think that would make for a much better project. I also lastly wanted to say, as the founding president of the Norwalk River Watershed Association back in the nineties, I appreciate, uh, the person that, uh, spoke about adding, because I was going to say Lori Mira, adding additional native plantings that will help both, uh, absorb pollutants from the polluted runoff, but also cool down, cool down the waters that come off of your roof, off of the impervious surfaces now. It really does help and it will help Village Creek. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Uh, next we have Chia West.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, I just have, uh, one quick question, um, excuse me, and it has to do with the, uh, auto, uh, crushing equipment. Uh, I didn't see exactly on, um, the plan where that is located. Is it still in existence? Is it going to be within, um, the building that we saw, uh, rendering of? And, um, if the auto crushing equipment is still going to be there and in use, is that, um, considered, uh, light industrial? And, um, it's Chia West and I'm at twenty-two Split Rock Road and I live in Village Creek. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chia. Uh, if anyone else would like to speak, uh, you can use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen. Click that once. If you're dialing on a phone, you'd hit star nine. Not seeing any. Amelia, do you want to go over, um, next steps, kind of where we're at right now?
Sure. So I would recommend that the commission leave the public hearing open for tonight and continue it to your next meeting. And then after that, the applicant respond, can respond. Uh, mostly because as the applicant had indicated, they currently do not comply with our parking requirements. There is a text amendment that you may be voting on tonight that would rectify this and bring that portion of the application into compliance. So as it stands, you can't vote tonight because the application does not comply yet. But, um, the applicant did also just submit a response letter to staff comments as well as revised plans that staff has not had the chance to look at yet. Um, I know TMP just sent a revised memo a couple hours before the meeting. And I know that the city arborist is still reviewing, is still reviewing the plans. So I would urge the commission to leave the public hearing open for tonight, um, because there is potential to receive new materials pending that further review.
Quick question for you, Amelia, on that. Um, would that be the case that with those new materials, the public would then have another opportunity to speak about the new materials next time?
Thank you.
Yep.
Only about the new materials.
Right, right. Thanks.
Okay, so I.
There are a few things that I, I think would be helpful tonight to address and respond to, so that then they don't linger for two weeks. Some of them are very simple to respond to. And I, one thing is I, I disagree with the characterization that the parking doesn't comply. Parking in front of the building is legally non-conforming. And we are taking advantage of that legal non-conforming status, which has a vested right. The text amendment would adjust that legal non-conforming and make, non-conforming and make it a conforming parking situation. So I disagree that it's legally not, that it's non-conforming. But having said that, you have an amendment pending before you that would address that particular concern. Uh, there are some, some comments that were made tonight that I, I do think they're responding to so that they don't get lost in, in the, the next two weeks to three weeks' time. Um, if that's not your pleasure, I fully understand. But if you would allow us to do that, that's fine too. I'll, I'll leave it up to the, the chair's discretion as to how you'd like to proceed.
We wait for the rebuttal until we, uh, close the public hearing.
So you'll wait until after this, keep this hearing open, conduct your hearing on your text amendment, come back when the next commission.
We're going to leave the public hearing open and, uh, proceed to, uh, our next matter. And in the next, our next meeting, we will take the matter up again.
Okay, understood.
And when it closes, then the rebuttal.
Sure. So we'll be back before you, August sixth, to present any new information, answer any questions and conduct rebuttal.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to make up a motion, uh, or, Alan, for, to continue the hearing to August sixth?
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
And we're all in favor. Can we do that by a hand raise, do you think?
Yes.
We all agree. Okay, good. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Attorney Satchi, Mr. Murphy, and, uh, everybody else who presented today.
Thank you for your time tonight. We look forward to seeing you on the sixth.
Yeah, see you on the sixth.
Okay.
Thank you. Now our next matter is, uh, twenty twenty-five dash forty-one R, planning and zoning commission, zoning regulation text amendments. To Article one and four, regard the location of non-conforming parks, commercial recreation establishment uses and permitting, permitting process for, uh, clustered single-family dwellings in the Silver Mine Tavern district. Uh, there's a public hearing and a report recommended action. Uh, Brian, are you ready to go over the?
Yes, um, so these are, um, some pretty simple changes that staff has proposed, uh, mostly in regards to applications that, uh, we've received, uh, questions that have come up. And then kind of just some oversights that happened as we, when we did the, the zoning reg rewrite. So, uh, the first change that staff is proposing is, uh, as previously just discussed, relating to non-conforming parking location. Um, so what this regulation amendment is proposing to do is that if you do have, non-conforming parking, meaning mostly related to location of parking, uh, so like parking in front of a building, uh, that this regulation would allow for, in certain circumstances, for certain zones, that a portion of that parking can remain in place and not be considered non-conforming any longer. So for the Le Joy application that you had just looked at, that parking, uh, row that they had in front of the building would be considered conforming under this zoning regulation amendment. Um, and it's limited, um, into where they can happen in the civic zone, uh, the hospital zone, the heavy industrial and light industrial zones. Um, mostly because those are some of the zones where, um, they either need flexibility or we're a little bit less concerned about having that building be, uh, uh, or new buildings be located, uh, on the street, creating that, um, building street front. Uh, the next two changes are related to commercial recreation establishments. Um, so, uh, not to put the cart before the horse, we'll skip down to number three, which is a change to allow commercial recreation establishments in the CD four and CD four W zones. Um, but they're going to be limited in maximum size, uh, to, uh, fifteen thousand square feet. Um, this came up because we've had a few, um, folks interested in, uh, putting in things like golf simulators, um, or, you know, other small scale uses that would fall under commercial recreation establishments, which right now are not permitted in the CD four zone. Um, and we think it's a reasonable request to allow things like that, again, that are smaller in scale, um, within, uh, the downtown area. And then the other part of this change is to increase the size of commercial recreation establishments in the CD three C zone where they're already allowed, um, to increase the size of when they'd actually have to come in and get a special permit through you. Right now, uh, the limit is, um, uh, fifteen hundred square feet, which is, um, extremely small, uh, for these commercial recreation establishments. For example, we had one person, I believe, looking over on Lois Street to put in, it was ultimately like half of a soccer field to do some training, uh, for soccer, and that would have triggered a special permit. And ag- again, the se- the size of it was, was ru- relatively small for what we would, um, review for a special permit application. And then should you agree that, uh, commercial recreation establishment should be allowed in the CD four, the CD four W zones, we'd have to amend the table, uh, like we had done with the previous text amendment, to give them some flexibility on how tall, uh, their ceiling height can be. So that's what this change here would do. Uh, and then the last change that we're proposing, this one, I think, just kind of got missed as we did the regulation rewrite, was for, uh, cluster, clustered, single-family housing in the Silver Mine Tavern District. Uh, in the old regulations, they had been permitted by special permit. Uh, so it was a bit of an oversight that we had missed, um, on how clustered, single-family dwellings are permitted. So we're proposing to put that back in, uh, so that they'd be permitted via special permit. Uh, the regulation was referred to the Harbor Management Commission, who found it consistent with the Harbor Management Plan. And it was also referred to the DEP, who found it consistent with the Coastal Maria, Coastal Management Act.
It gets later and later. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Brian? No, no questions. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Something, go to the public hearing. As much as I would like.
Brian, okay. So members of the public who are interested in speaking, um, you can speak once, uh, but you can speak as long as you want to. And give us your name and address when you begin to speak. And then Brian, you can bring them over.
Sure. So anyone would like to speak, use the raise your hand tool, you click that once, or dial star nine if you're on a phone. That will bring over Diane Lauricella.
Yes, good evening. I'm, uh, traveling by, uh, car. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Doing hands-free in this late. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Staff. For the record, my name is Diane Lauricella, otherwise known as Lauricella, when I'm in a good mood. Um, I live at twenty-one, uh, Little Fox Lane in Norwalk. I just wanted, since I was, uh, listening to your, uh, work today, I wanted to just comment on the text amendments related to work, um, uh, with, uh, recreational, um, with, related to recreational buildings. Um, and the thing is, I must confess, I didn't quite understand what Mr. Baker, as he was describing the change related to this, so I just wanted to make a comment and a question. Um, and that is, related to, uh, facilities that apply to become, uh, commercial, uh, recreational entities. Um, I have been somewhat dismayed at times when bouncy houses are proposed and made in industrial zones such as along Martin Luther King Drive. The intention of Martin Luther King Drive, and I have been in Norwalk since it was first being built, was to have industry and, uh, other commercial, uh, including maybe landscaping, that sort of thing. Not bouncy houses and not even, um, like what happened over the guardol chemical site, which is, um, a, uh, lacrosse training play. Uh, I wanted to know, with this commission, consider not allowing commercial recreational entities unless and until both industrial and commercial other than recreational and even, shall I say, residential conversions of former industrial sites, as long as it is clean and safe. And it, before you allow a building to become a bouncy house or a lacrosse training area. I think it totally, and, and this is not this commission, but previous commissions, I don't think any of you were on the commissions that allowed the bouncy house on Martin Luther King Drive, if it is still there. Um, and the, um, lacrosse place, which was guardol chemical. Uh, again, they were polluters and I'm glad they're, they're gone, but there are clean industries to be had with good jobs, good paying jobs, good walkable jobs in Norwalk if the economic development and this com- and this commission and staff would look for those types of uses. So I, I guess I'm asking that you consider or reconsider an amendment to what Mr. Baker proposed when it relates to recreational facilities to disallow at, to disallow, uh, recreational facilities unless and until better and higher uses are explored. Because it's too easy to, um, it takes a little more cleverness and collaboration to find a very good employer than a bouncy house. Thank you for letting me speak.
Uh, if anyone else would like to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool now. Seeing none, Ms. Wells.
Hey, we'll, we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, you have a rebuttal, Brian?
Yeah, just so you all know, um, commercial recreation establishments as part of your, I believe it was part of the industrial zone rewrite that happened in twenty twenty-two, uh, took out commercial recreation establishments from being allowed in industrial zone. Um, I think that was, um, not only in response to the study, but also in response, um, to the pickleball courts that went in on Woodward, um, which were an industrial zone. Um, so these uses are no longer permitted in the industrial zone. Um, they are limited to, right now, the CD three C, uh, which is Main Avenue, Westport Avenue and Connecticut Avenue. Um, again, in agreement with Ms. Lauricella that, uh, we would prefer to see old manufacturing buildings or large warehouse uses, uh, be repurposed for, um, industrial users rather than, you know, bouncy houses, trampoline parks, those kind of things.
All right. Uh, does anybody have any questions of their own?
We've, we've, we've heard, um, uh, this presentation before, of course. Um, and now it's, uh, gone, uh, to public hearings. So we've had an opportunity to, uh, question this um, and, uh, to seek, to seek changes. So I would, uh, move, uh, that we approve uh, uh, these proposed changes.
Is there a second?
This is Chapin, I'll second.
Two seconds? Okay, uh, Brian, do you want to do a roll call?
Your House Book Resolution real quick.
Okay. Oh, I see. I'm sorry.
That's all right. It's late.
Yeah, stop thinking at a certain point. Which is Pat gone past. Okay, is everyone happy with the, uh, resolution? Okay, are we ready to take a vote?
All right, I'll get started. Uh, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Sh- let's get Mr. Shulman, Mr. Williams?
Yes. Give him an extra second.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Langalas?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So we'll move on to the acceptance of minutes. Uh, for the meeting of July second, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to accept the minutes? Tammy moves, Darius second? All those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, so.
I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining as well. I did not have a chance to read them.
Okay, so three abstentions and for yes approvals, approved. Did you approve them, Darius?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, so, oh, I guess five yes and, uh, three abstentions with, uh, Chapin, Dick and, uh, Jackie.
Yeah. Okay. Good. So we'll move on to the discussion of the staff's draft, what are just going to changes for the affordable housing plans recommendations.
Yeah, um, it's up to you if you'd like to move this to your next meeting. Uh, it doesn't have to be discussed tonight. It's getting pretty late, so it's up to you guys.
I moved.
Pardon me?
I was moving that we move it to our next meet.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is everybody in favor of we'll be at to our next meeting? Yep. Yep, okay, good. Comments of the director? The director isn't here, but Brian is the acting director for this week.
No comments from me.
Okay, any comments from the commissioners?
Uh, Brian, uh, despite what you were told, the fountain at, um, the Pearl is still not operating. I was there yesterday.
All right, we'll get on them, Lou.
Thank you. And I, I don't know what the process would be, but, uh, I would like, uh, to begin a, uh, conversation uh, regarding architectural review um, in any areas of the city or in any of the regulations that, uh, don't currently require it, uh, for projects over a certain minimum size.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. It's a good point.
Appreciate that.
Okay, so any further comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, okay. See you all soon. See you all at the next meeting.
Good night.